We'll do the pledge allegiance and we will stand at this time. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now we will proceed on to the land acknowledgement and we would have trustee clerk.
Thank you, President Christian. We recognize that we are presently on the lands of the Tchutchenyo Muekma, Karken, Oloney peoples and acknowledge them as the first inhabitants of the land we currently occupy.
Thank you. Now we are moving on to A4. Welcome procedures. Once again, welcome to tonight's meeting. We are about to go into closed session. But before we do, the board is here to receive public comment on any closed session item that is agendized. The board will then adjourn to closed session and reconvene in open session to continue with the regular agenda at 6:30 PM. If you are attending the meeting in person here at DeJohn and you wish to make a public comment now on a closed session item, you will need to submit an orange request to address the board form to indicate your desire to speak. If participating by Zoom, you will need to raise your hand by clicking on the appropriate icon in the Zoom app or by pressing star nine. If assessing the meeting by phone, there is no yielding of time to another speaker and there is no substitution of speakers permitted. Please finish up the orange comment cards now. If you are here in the audience and you are in Zoom or attending by phone, please get in line to speak by raising your Zoom hand now. To access translation of the agenda, click the top webpage using the word English for translation into multiple languages. Meeting interpretation services are available by VI Zoom by clicking on the globe icon at the bottom of the screen. Due to the Brown Act, members cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda and do not usually respond to items presented in public comment. Please note that the order of business may be changed without notice. Dr. Hurst, roll call.
Yes, sir. President Christian?
Here.
Trustee Clerk Gonzalez Hoi.
Here, thank you.
Trustee Reckler.
Good afternoon, President.
Trustee Phillips.
Here.
Trustee Smith Folds.
Good afternoon, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Good, present.
Thank you, all present and accounted for.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Hurst. And now the items we would discuss and from close se- to items that we will be discussing in closed session, which is A6. In closed session, the government code of 54957 dash seven, tonight's, the board will consider one, number one, conference with labor negotiators, two, public employee discipline dismissal, release complaint, and three, and now we will now we will go to public comment on closed session. Is anyone in the audience or on Zoom?
No public comment at this time.
Okay, thank you. And now we will proceed adjourned to closed session at this time. From closed session, and we will be continuing on with the open session of the March 2nd, 2022 regular scheduled meeting of the West Country Costa Unified School District. To access translation of the agenda, click on the top of the webpage using the word English and translation into multiple into multiple languages. Meeting interpretations services are available in the Zoom by clicking on the top of the globe, the icon at the bottom of the screen. Due to the ongoing COVID-19 crisis, the manner in which the board the manner of the board in which the Board of Education meetings are conducted has changed. Thank you in advance for your understanding and cooperation as we experiment with new ways to conduct the people's business while allowing for the maximum participation and adhering to our values of respect and safety for the community. We have changed public comment format, which now occurs at the beginning of the meeting. Public comment will last for no more than one hour and includes any agendized and non-agendized items. The time allotted for each speaker is two minutes. We are about to start public comment, so if you are adhering me here at the meeting in person, you will need to submit an orange request to address the board form to indicate your desire to speak on an agenda item. Please finish up those hands and and turn into staff members now. And participating by Zoom, you would need to raise your hand by clicking on the appropriate icon Zoom app or by pressing star nine. If assessing the meeting by phone, there is no yielding of time nor is substitution of speakers permitted. If you are making a public comment from Zoom, please raise your hands now. And now, do, is there anything that we need to report out from closed session?
No, sir.
All right, thank you. Due to the Brown Act, the board members cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda and do not usually respond to items presented in public comment. Please note that the order of business may be changed without notice. For all of you who are new to the meeting, we have Ms. Dunning and Mr. Castro from C and D Parliamentary Services assisting the board with our parliamentary procedures, helping us to learn the best practices. Tonight's speaking order as follows. It's trustee Leon, trustee Flores, and then we have trustee Reckler, trustee Smith Folds, trustee Phillips, clerk Gonzalez Hoi, and myself.
President Christian, when you have a minute, I have a point of order or a point of clarification.
Yes, go ahead.
I have a question for the parliamentarian. Is it appropriate to ask now?
Yes, go ahead.
My question is, the last time it came 10 o'clock and then there was an adjournment, what are the proper procedures to ensure that the rest of the agenda is either complete or the board has the opportunity to give board comments? Does that occur before 10 o'clock and we ask for an extension? Or does that, can you please walk me through that process?
That's a great question. So once we get to 10 o'clock, you could make a motion to extend the meeting time to complete the agenda.
Thank you so much. And can that, can that motion be made to complete part or all of the agenda? Does it have to, can it be part of the agenda or does it have to be all of the agenda?
It can be whatever part of the agenda you put in your motion. So let's say we're getting to 10 o'clock and we still have item G2 and G1 to do, but you only want to hear one of them? You can move that we extend the meeting to complete item G1 or you could move to extend the meeting for a particular timeframe.
And you said that that needs to be done at 10 o'clock or can it be done before 10?
Because we, it should be done as we get close to 10 o'clock because we will not know until then whether or not we're going to need that time.
Thank you so much for the clarification. Thank you, trustee, President Christian. That's it for me.
Okay, thank you. Now we will proceed on to C3. It's the public comment session. As a reminder, public comment will last for no more than one hour. Any agendized or non-agendized item, the time allotted per person is two minutes. If you are attending the meeting in person, please raise your hand or turn in an orange card request to address the board form now. Once we start, we do not accept more. If participating from Zoom, raise your Zoom hand now. If on the phone, please hit star nine now. There are no yielding of time or substitution of speakers is permitted. Due to the Brown Act, board members cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda and do not usually respond to items presented in public comment. Who is the last hand in, that's raised in the Zoom? And so we will go with the last hand and we will begin a public comment. Are there any public comment present in the audience?
Yes.
Okay.
Our first public speaker is Kimberly Chamberlain.
Good evening. I'm Kimberly Chamberlain, IFPTE Local 21 SSA Chapter President. I am here this evening to ask a question. There are decisions that are going to be made over the next 13 days to eliminate, reduce, and reassign multiple positions and people, staff, community. These will all affect students. I realize these decisions will be made in budget compliance focus. Please keep in mind, over the last two years, many of these people who are going to be reassigned, eliminated or reduced have put their best foot forward in keeping students and community as their primary focus and educating them and keeping students safe. I hope this board and administration will keep that in mind. I realize over the last six months, it has been very difficult to get out and get that interpersonal relationship with our members. I hope that you will take that into consideration in the next 13 days, that you will go out and personally meet some of these people, personally shake hands with them, speak with them, and understand what they have put forward to making these students feel safe in our community schools. I hope that you will all take that into consideration as we were making these decisions. Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Mark Schalls.
Thank you. Board and trustees, on January 18, 2022, you were all emailed a copy of the title page from the January 27, 1923 State Board of Health Weekly Bulletin. The lead article was titled "The Prevention of Communicable Diseases in Children", and the most significant sentence in that article reads, "The control of the communicable diseases, however, is absolutely and entirely within the province of health departments." This sentence identifies health departments as the entities that control communicable diseases and not school districts like WCCUSD. Consequently, the second clause of Education Code 49405, which I hope you are probably familiar with through the emails I have sent in public comment, refers to all vaccinations. So because of its unlawful vaccine mandate, the district is being sued. Spending district funds on a defense against arguments that are superior to the district's arguments is a misuse of public funds. If you had to pay for the associated costs, would you be so confident that you would risk your personal wealth? If so, then please do it. Otherwise, drop the mandate and save the district the expense of failed litigation. The question of the lawfulness of the vaccine mandate by a school district has also already been answered in San Diego. The answer from the judge was that it was unlawful. With that question still unanswered in the current lawsuit facing the district, why does it continue to potentially act unlawfully? Would you recommend to a student to potentially break the law until told not to do so? Regarding the postponement of the mandate, the district's actions are not consistent with transparent, open, and honest communication. The vaccine mandate deadline was postponed one month ago and instead of informing district personnel, the district continued with its charade that the February 18 deadline was still in effect. Kioskic schools promoted it, teachers promoted it to students, the district website promoted it. This type of behavior far from promotes trust. It destroys it. And in conclusion, I ask that the district completely abandon its unlawful vaccine mandate. And if it won't do that, at least stop using district resources to promote it until a judgment has been made and instead to use district resources to fulfill its legislated purpose of providing a quality education.
Please conclude.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will now move to our Zoom public comment and our last speaker for the night is Yolanda Viera Allen. Our next public speaker is Gabby Michalletti. Please unmute yourself.
Hello, my name is Gabrielle Michalletti and I'm a teacher at Verde Elementary. I'm absolutely floored that this board would be considering letting teachers go right now. This is a repeat of right before the pandemic for very different reasons. This is part of why we still have classrooms without teachers. I want you to remember early January when teachers were getting sick in droves. The central office staff had to be sent out to be teachers because there are no schools without teachers. I noticed we've never been so desperate for central office staff that we pull educators out of their positions to fill in. Educators are the base of the pyramid of staff without whom schools simply cannot function. Budgets usually demonstrate priorities and I'm failing to understand why this district prioritizes expensive consultants and upper management for central office. Consultants you don't even listen to. Remember when you brought expensive consultants in to advise this board on how you could be more functional and then ignored everything you were told, including that you should be following your own bylaws? Two years ago, when this district threatened riffing teachers, even though they ultimately didn't, I knew many teachers who left. They found different districts to work for or changed careers. If you tell teachers they might lose their jobs, they aren't going to wait around, especially after how we have been treated through the past two years. There are many job opportunities out there with other districts or out of teaching and all the stress it entails altogether. With these shenanigans, you're cutting off your nose despite your face. We already don't have enough teachers. What's your plan? That you'll raise class sizes? How will you serve students and better their education? Is that not your ultimate purpose as a school board? To do everything within your power to improve the conditions in which students learn and give them their best possible chance at success and thriving? Increasing class sizes would push even more teachers over the edge to leave. You have nothing in this district without the educators, therapists, psychologists, counselors, speech pathologists, janitors, food services, and office staff that you continue to treat as disposable. Cuts should be kept as far away from pot school sites as possible. You should at the very least be sharing all the information UTR is requesting so that the community can see how these calculations are being made and where all our funding is going and update your plan to include the new funding promised in January by California.
Our next public comment is Stella Miranda. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, can you hear me? Hi, can you hear me? Okay. Tonight, my focus will be to address West Country Costa Unified School, parents and school board. In the past few months, it seems that our voices go unheard or ignored. No matter what group or side of the fence you're on, please have a pen in your hand to take this information down. Please listen very carefully. Stop masking our children for the safety, for their safety and well-being. These mask mandates, vaccine mandates, and COVID tests are all under EUA. If you're, if, if our child gets sick or injured, no one is going to be held accountable. Second, we want to invite you to an informative webinar webinar on March 3rd, 2022, to protect our children's rights and learn how to file a tort claim against the district superintendent, individual school board members, teachers, and staff that are violating federal and state laws and ed codes. The school board should also listen in to this and learn how we can change and implement and work together to benefit all of our children. The webinar is by two California attorneys, ready to answer your questions. For more information, please email nomandates2021@gmail.com. Parents refuse to allow your children to be masked effective Friday, March 4th, 2022. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Salon Harrison. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening, board. How y'all doing this evening and superintendent? Tonight here for the Black Kids again, as always. And I just would like to share with you guys, right now, our Black Kids are really, you know, showing signs of this two-year pandemic they've been under and they're not doing well. And I really need you guys to look at what the resolution has put forth and what it hasn't. And I am demanding nicely a special board meeting or a study session to address our Black students, their, their well-being, their educational outcomes. What has staff done? What do they need to do? Black parents need more support in getting resources to our students to make sure that they're okay. Some are not doing well going back in person. Some are doing well. And I just really think a lot of things are not being addressed as a whole for the Black students and we need more support from the district. And there are things that have been put in place that I think need to be implemented. And I think you guys giving that demand by allowing a study session for Black students would be something that would be equitable for us during this time to get the adequate support we need from the district and for our Black children. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Sam Clear. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening. My name is Sam Clear and this is my fifth year teaching third grade at Stige Elementary School. I am thankful and honored to stand with everyone in our community. Today I'm speaking in order to stress this pivotal point for Stige. I cannot speak for everyone, but will disclose my own beliefs and experiences. Our staff has fought tirelessly to educate students in spite of all of this year's challenges. You can look at the growing academic data and visit us to see the joy happening in classrooms. However, last time we experienced a reduction in force, we lost close to half of our teachers and many more Teamsters members. Today, if you cut members of our staff again, we may lose even more teachers and Teamsters members. Not to mention, two grades remain vacant of teachers. Cutting teachers and Teamsters members at Stige would be a clear presentation of the cruel racism and prejudice targeted, targeting the school with the highest percentage of Black students. Despite this possible demoralizing treatment, I assure you, we would get louder. We would not let anyone destroy this community school. We would not let anyone push out our loved ones and drain us of all of our resources. As board members, you need to hold your staff accountable and make sure they are being transparent with information. Have a good night and stay safe.
Our next public comment is Shai Tanner. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening. My name is Shai Anne Tanner. I am the parent of a Black second grader at Washington in the DLI program. I am also the APEC lead at Washington and the ASAT chair. I am requesting that the board hold a special study session to specifically address the Black students in this district. This district is failing our Black children and it is a shame that we have not had this conversation, especially because we have a majority Black board. It has been two years since the resolution was implemented and nothing has happened except the creation of Oasis. I'm calling on you, trustee Christian, trustee Smith Folds, trustee Phillips, trustee Leon, trustee Flores, trustee Gonzalez, trustee Reckler, to make a motion to support the Black students with this special study session. Don't wait until the election year to discuss Black students. Do it now. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Nishan Williams. Please unmute yourself.
Hello, my name is Nishan Williams and I'm the eighth grade math teacher at Levanya Dejon Middle School. Go Dejon. This year, educators like myself have been working really hard to give our students some semblance of stability, even as COVID continues to upend things. One of the biggest challenges we have faced is a lack of staff across our schools in key positions. When schools are missing administrators, teachers, counselors, and aides, it's really hard to support students academically. I'm concerned that the district isn't doing enough to recruit and retain staff. I'm concerned that the district isn't doing enough to recruit and retain staff of color. I'm concerned that the district isn't doing enough to recruit and retain African-American staff. Instead, it seems like they want to cut school site staffing even more. Our kids need caring adults, not a revolving door of subs- Our kids need caring adults, not a revolving door of substitutes. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Aminata Fielder. Please unmute yourself.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. So my name is Aminata Fielder and I am the parent of a second grader at Washington Elementary School, a dual-language immersion school. And my daughter is black. I'm black. We have a black family. And being an English speaker, learning Spanish at Washington Elementary is, it's challenging. And sometimes I don't, I can't, not sometimes. I never know where my child is fitting in, how well is she doing? Who is she being compared to? She's being compared on learning Spanish to other students who already speak Spanish. So is that really a true measure of how well she's doing? So, and I want to be able to provide the support that she needs or find the support that she needs and be supported by the district and the school. So what I'm asking for is a special meeting, a study session, so we can discuss how other African-American and black students are doing within the district around the dual-language immersion programs and learning other languages. I think it's imperative to be able to see and have a true measure of how our kids are doing. Because when I'm approaching my child, like she needs to do better, that affects her self-esteem and that affects how she sees herself. And so it affects a lot of stuff. So I would just like to ask for a special study session so we could talk about the achievement or the needs, the achievement and the needs of the black students within the district. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Joseph Glazer. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, thank you. My name is Joseph Glazer and I am a teacher at Hercules Middle. Tonight, you're going to see a presentation from Mr. McIntyre on the WCCUSD budget. And as you consider what actions to take coming up, please remember to keep students at the center of your decisions. We cannot continue to prioritize outside contracts, consultants, or upper management at the expense of staff who directly serve kids. It's concerning to me, you're voting on several expensive contracts and services tonight at this meeting, when your CBO is telling us that you might need to do cuts. Our system's been stretched to the limit this year. We don't have enough staff as it is. Please come to my school and see how hard all of us are working and how much our students are learning under difficult circumstances. Evaluate your decisions through that lens. Our students will not succeed, or sorry, our students will continue to succeed if they don't have those outside consultants or expensive contracts. They don't need them. They need their teachers. I'm also against lifting the outdoor mask rule. That makes no sense to me. Omicron can still be spread outside because it's so contagious, almost as much as measles, especially in the middle of the week. That makes no sense. Also, our schools are in desperate trouble. Many of us period subbing every day. We're overwhelmed. Why is it central office only sends people to period sub at our schools when there were threats of or actual sick outs? Is that what it takes to get people's attention that we're desperate and we're struggling and we need support? We have people leaving mid-year. Please send people to sub at Hercules Middle. We're reaching a breaking point. Please come to sub at all of our sites across the district where we are period subbing every day and in elementary, teachers are taking extra students every day. Everybody on this dais should be doing their part, period subbing and taking extra students in our elementary. Please put your money where your mouth is. If you care about students, come, do it, and send your staff members in your office. They can take their laptops, they can take their tablets, and they can multitask. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Maggie Whitaker. Please unmute yourself. Hello, please unmute yourself.
Hi, my name is Maggie Whitaker and I am a parent of two children at Harding Elementary School. I want to first recognize that a budget is a moral document and as such should reflect the best interests of the community that it serves. In this spirit, I want to address staffing in the upcoming year. We are seeing an increase in TK programs across the district, requiring the hiring of teachers and also aides across the district. And it is essential that those positions are recruited and in position for the upcoming school year. These programs are essential to the population that they serve and as such require two hired positions per class. And yet, you plan on pink slipping teachers this year. Additionally, our current staffing across the district is suffering. How many schools are missing essential staff members? How many schools are short teachers? What else is going on in the district that HR is not actively recruiting and ensuring that these essential members are in place in the current gaps across the school sites? As you are planning this budget, your work needs to ensure that students have the teachers they need in the classrooms, that you do not pink slip teachers across the district and rearrange teachers across the communities, creating holes in the communities that are created at each and every school site. Because a school is not just a building, it is a community of people. As I say, a budget is a moral document. We will see what you value by where you allocate funds. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Evelyn Smith. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. My name is Evelyn Smith and I am a teacher at Coronado School. As board members, I hope you will hold your staff accountable and make sure they are being transparent with information. I'm concerned that you are hearing tonight from the chief budget officer that cuts to certificated staff will need to be made. Meanwhile, there is a certificated hiring fair scheduled next week. The truth is, we do need teachers. We still have vacancies this year. But how can we be recruiting and laying off people at the same time? We need to recruit and retain the staff we have. I am a special education teacher and I'm the UTR rep for special ed teachers who teach our youngest students with special needs. These teachers have worked under the most difficult situations historically. They have been short-staffed, not given the promised aides. When there's an aide absent, there is no sub-aid. And yet, these teachers keep showing up and being there for the students. So please, keep teachers and aides a priority. By doing this, you will ensure that students' educational needs remain the district's primary focus. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Marissa Glidden. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening, superintendent and board members. My name is Marissa Glidden and I am a third grade teacher on full-time release to serve as president of United Teachers of Richmond. After two grueling years of teaching during a pandemic, our students need and deserve a stable and caring community more than ever. To do this, they need quality educators who have the resources and support necessary to do their jobs effectively. This means fully staffed schools. Our school started this year with staffing vacancies, which have deeply impacted our students. And our educators have worked overtime to try to support our schools. Our district has always struggled with retaining educators. But now, as the state and nation face the biggest educator retention crisis in recent history, it is time for the district to do more than ever to keep our exceptional teachers in West Contra Costa. This means that our budget should focus on maintaining resources close to the classroom and fully staffing our schools. A budget is your way of showing, of sharing the district's priorities with the community. Now is the time to prioritize your spending to reflect the district's values. I am urging you to invest more resources into recruiting, retaining, and supporting educators and school staff so that all of our students can succeed. Show us that you prioritize students by spending money where it counts, on your educators and support staff who directly impact children's lives every single day. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Guadalupe Perez. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening. Sadly, the issue of mandates is a divisive one. We've all become so polarized that we can't even truly listen and consider each other's point of view. We've labeled each other liberals or anti-vaxxers or worse. The truth is, both sides are composed of people from all walks of life and from all ends of the political spectrum, and even both vaxxed and unvaxxed. We've also come to not only dismiss but to censor views not aligned with ours. What kind of society are we if we censor dissenting views? Tomorrow, the voice that is silenced may be yours. What kind of example are we setting for our students? If we're not critical thinkers, who take all information and question and analyze it? Today, we can't even have scientific discourse. If you're, if you don't go along with the current narrative, you'll be censored, deplatformed, bullied, or if you're a doctor, you could lose your medical license. How does that benefit us? It doesn't. It's dangerous and it makes us ignorant. As a small step, if we can't start by listening to each other, whether here at this meeting or in our state or in our country, then I propose that we look outside of the US and see what other countries are doing. Israel, one of the countries with the most stringent COVID vaccination mandates, has ended their vaccine mandate. The United Kingdom, which had similar COVID policies as the US, has also ended all COVID-related mandates, even for health workers. The same is true of many other countries in the world. Here at home, New York is dropping its vaccine mandate. So is Oregon. The situation is changing and mandates proposed previously are untenable now. It's been more than two years. The district needs to reassess. Let's face it, we're not in a state of emergency. We just hosted the Super Bowl here in California and COVID cases and deaths have dropped dramatically. Omicron was mild, as predicted by many doctors. Fortunately, the many infected with Omicron now have natural immunity. So again, I've had everyone to be critical thinkers. I've had everyone to follow the lead of other countries and of other states in ending the vaccine mandate. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Jean Kinstner. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening, board. Good evening, everybody. I work at Bertie Elementary School. And I would like to bring to the attention of the board and the community listening that according to WCCUSD, we're about to go into another round of being over our budget and cutting teaching positions again. I understand that the central office has acquired new employees, but I cannot receive the help that I've been asking for, how to figure out how to expand my credential to include being able to teach TK. I already have the units. I just need the help to get the credential. I've been asking since October. Where are the dollars going? Who are we hiring? Why can I not receive the information I'm asking for about getting that credential expanded to teach TK? I know you're going to need TK teachers and it would benefit the district. I'm also wondering why it is that under the current COVID testing company, they're charging $180 per test. The original company charged 90. We're paying double. I understand that the original company didn't have the needed resources to deliver the results in a timely manner. They agreed to upgrade and change the resources and fix the problem. However, we canceled their contract before the week that this went into effect. And we went to this newer company that charges double and is much harder to sign up for. But it's the fact that we're going into a deficit and we're charging double for these tests. Again, I ask you, where is the money going? We're going to cut our teachers and our staff that directly work with and support our students. We cannot do this. We need to find a better way. We need to curtail our spending. Thank you.
Our next public comment is David Mujo. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening, board members, President Smith Folds. And I will continue to say that because you guys have still not gone back and followed your bylaws. I asked the parliamentarians to visit that while they're there with you, while you have not instated her as the president of the board. The clerk should be moved to president. You still haven't done that. I, I'm so grateful where I've worked that people listen, that no matter what position you have there, the higher-ups, they listen. They work with you. They make things better. You guys don't listen to anybody. You don't listen to the people you hire to give you advice. So you got parliamentarians there. Is, is it show? Are you going to listen to them? This whole masking thing, it should just be choice. If you're taking off masks now, then you're honestly admitting that the vaccine don't work, the masks don't work. Forty percent, forty-five percent of staff that have been vaccinated at work were out sick this past wave. So it's, it's not working. There's natural immunity. You're asking students to be tested for exposure, but they don't even know if they were exposed, if they were within six feet of something. There's a criteria. There's a questionnaire and a criteria to go through to see if you were near that person. And you're not following that. Furthermore, you guys aren't following your mandate updates. Your schools are still putting out information that aren't true anymore. You guys need to really get with it. In my last few minutes, I'd like to be silent for the brave people of Ukraine fighting for their freedom. We may be there one day too with people who don't listen.
Our next public comment is Maria Almansa. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening. As far as the vaccine mandate, we are wasting resources and energy into mandating a vaccine that does not work. Focus on important issues in your district, such as the safety of our children, violence at schools, and guns on campus. Getting kids at the educational level where they need to be. Teacher shortages, for example. Dimitri, last board meeting, a woman mentioned you have not once visited a school in your district who needs support, even after reaching out to you several times. How can you sit here and act like you care for these children when you don't prioritize what you are supposed to be focusing your attention on? Every meeting you have sat here and pushed this mandate, put the same energy into matters that actually need your attention. On February 16th, the board told the judge the vaccine mandate had been suspended. You made no effort to inform the public and staff. Why do you continue to hold vaccine clinics at school? Why did you continue to reach out to parents about the deadline? Why did you keep advertising this deadline? You deceive the court and the parents you want to inflict fear on. Take into consideration the children who will be affected by your decisions. Many parents cannot afford to stay home with their children for independent study when you deny them the right of unimportant education. Where is the transparency you claim to have? There are kids in your district, specifically African-American, who are experiencing differential outcomes across academics, social, emotional, and behavioral domains. Over 50% are struggling readers by second grade. Where is a plan to help them in their education? You haven't stopped to think about how this absurd mandate would harm their education even more? Aren't you supposed to make things better instead of making them worse? Get your priorities in place. Unmask children, let them choose and be equal. Let them breathe. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Eduardo Sanchez. Please unmute yourself.
Hello, my name is Eduardo Sanchez. Stella, on the webinar, great job for the parents who wanted to take this legal. That is 100% the way to go. Stella, I know what you're doing. And parents, I recommend that this is going to be over sooner than you think. Just get this going. Go after these board members. They don't care about your kids. They don't even follow the science. They're, they're just told what to do. I'm going to give you a little thing about the FDA and Pfizer. Pfizer, 2009, had to pay more than $2.3 billion on damages on, for their, for the medicine use that they were using back then, and they still profited. Why are we going to trust them now? We have another problem. The FDA is asking 75 years to release the information on how they approve Pfizer. You know, thank God, we had a judge that said, no, this year, guess what? We already released some of this information on how it was approved and on the testing. It is damaging what's going on. The testing that went on, people, our parents, I would really recommend you guys look into it, especially you board members. Do some homework. Do some homework. I know you're not doing none of it. Another thing, somebody mentioned about the mask. The masks don't even work. Everybody already said that Fauci, the CDC, the only ones that do work are the N95s and the schools will not supply them. You know, now we have the kids having to use a mask that doesn't work for a vaccine that doesn't work. Everybody in my job, we have 2,200 employees. I work for AC Transit. Eighty percent of the people that were getting sick were fully vaccinated. This vaccine is not working. Stop messing around with this stuff. Let's get back to business. Let's get back to work. Guadalupe, your information was great. I'm looking forward for all the parents to get on it, you know, get on this as soon as, as soon as possible. Before FDA releases all the information on how they approve Pfizer, this thing's gonna be over. Still, go after these board members. Teach them a lesson.
Our next public comment is Brian Coleman. Please unmute yourself.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good. I wanna thank the board and all the members for sitting in tonight. After a long day of meetings, I know you're really tired. Believe me, I'm tired too. It's been a long workday for me. I'm a parent in district and also an executive board member of ASAT. And I do wanna say a few things. It is a lot of confusion going on with these meetings. We haven't been able to do anything that we were supposed to do. I'm saddened that the teachers have to fight for their jobs. And as a parent and an ASAT member, I'm definitely gonna fight for them, just as much as I'm gonna fight for the kids. We are all gonna come together and stop bickering back and forth from each other. The kids suffer and there's no reason to make the teachers suffer too. You shouldn't fire them. You should help them. And as parents, we're going to back the teachers and help them also. And with both of us together, I want you board members and everybody else, including the superintendent, to know, remember my name. Brian Coleman. I would love a meeting with any of you to discuss a solve. You're not meeting with the parents. You're not getting out enough. You're not meeting with your teachers and they're suffering for it. You're too disjointed to solve the problem. That's what be your doom. Especially our children, because they're gonna suffer. I don't wanna lose any of our children, black, white, Latino, any, any race that you so deemed that needed to be championed. All of the children need our help, each and every one of them. No more fighting. Let's work together. Thank you for your time and I appreciate each and every one of you and thank you for being there for us. But I do wanna see results or there will be changes. I can probably...
Our next public comment is Maisha Harris Gash. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening, Maisha Harris Gash, Kennedy High School teacher and very proud Kennedy High School graduate. So first, I'm gonna say I am thankful for the clinic at Kennedy High School because that's where I got my booster shot, as well as I can breathe through the double mask that I wear every day. And I wear it because my life matters and the lives of my students matter. So now, the main reason I call is I wanna share a quote from my sorority's Delta Sigma Theta's 27th National President. And her life's motto was this. "Don't measure your life by the number of breath you take. Instead, measure your life by the number of moments that take your breath away." And so I wanna share that the unexpected surprise, one day, a couple of weeks ago, my students, they earned a break, so we're just going out to get some sunshine and who do we come across? Dr. Hurst, Mr. Booker, and the district superintendent. And so I just wanna say thank you for taking the time, Dr. Hurst, to speak with my students, the eye contact, them introducing themselves, the shaking of the hand. That is something that is priceless for young people to interact with adults and let alone interact with adults in positions of power and influence. I also wanna thank Trustee Christian for coming by the campus as well and being seen by our students. And you know, I really like to talk about my students and I wanna share that my students really showed me some empathy today. On Monday, they had no idea that I came to work with a very bad headache, like I wanted to throw up kinda headache. And so I struggled on Monday. I took yesterday off because I was just so tired. Came to work today, they were like, Miss Gash, where are you? Because one thing they know is that typically I will let them know I'm not gonna be here at work. So that lets you know I do not miss a whole lot of work. And just that when I told them what happened, they were like, are you okay today? You feeling better? You know, just that they cared enough to share that. So I just wanna share that I love my students. That's why I show up every day, because they're worth it, because they are showing up and so will I. Everybody have a great night.
Our next public comment is Scotty Smith. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening, board. This is Scotty Smith and what I would like to say, speak about is Disability Awareness Month. It's too bad that the community can't talk on this item while it's on the agenda, but you guys have stifled the community in terms of speaking after agenda items. But I want to point out to parents and the community is that there are some good things happening here in the district in terms of for disabled students. And one of the things that parents should definitely do is join and attend some of the CAC committee meetings every month. That is the Community Advisory Committee and that's for special ed. So you should definitely go there, learn what is going on in sped, what services are available in the schools and outside of the schools for students. The other thing is you have a parent resource center and I believe Janine Bishop is still in charge of that center. And she does a lot of parent trainings. She provides resources that help speak to the rights of parents. And I think that is another place that you should contact to find out what your rights are as a sped parent. And I just wanna say, it's great to have a month, but then disability awareness should be every month. And in terms of the layoffs that are coming, I would think that this district will not even think about getting rid of a teacher unless there's something wrong with the teacher. Because right now, teachers are overworked and underpaid. So I support the teachers and the cuts should start from the top down. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Francisco Ortiz. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening, board members, Superintendent Hurst, community and staff. My name is Francisco Ortiz. I'm a fifth grade teacher at Ford Elementary on release this year to serve as vice president of United Teachers of Richmond and community schools organizer. I'm calling in today to urge the board to invest in your educators and education support providers who work directly and positively impact the lives of our students and families. I am advocating for you all to keep the cuts away or as far away from the classroom as possible and start from the top. We have record funding from the state with increased funding in the next fiscal year from Governor Newsom's budget. We are not in the same financial position that we were two years ago when United Teachers of Richmond members took massive cuts to support the district in balancing its budget. The financial sky is not falling from the district. It is imperative that all of the financial information is transparent and that you critically engage from a different perspective to see what the district has actually been spending on in the past year. We cannot prioritize pet projects. We cannot prioritize outside consultants and contracts that do not directly benefit our students. We cannot invest in over-testing our students, over-testing our teachers and overburdening them with initiatives that are right out of the school privatization playbook. Invest in our students, invest in our teachers and education support providers. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Lisa Dispro. Please unmute yourself.
Hello?
Can you hear me? Please confirm that you can hear me.
We can hear you now.
Okay, thank you. I wanna say...
Ma'am, we cannot hear you. Ms. Dispro, we cannot hear you.
Our next public comment is Denise Steen. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening, President Christian, trustees, Dr. Hurst. I'm Denise Steen. I'm the principal of Collins Elementary School in Pinot. I wanna speak to an incident that occurred on Collins campus on Monday. The fact is, when we were alerted of stranger danger, the amazing staff at Collins pulled together quickly and put our safety protocols into action. The fact is that the Pinot police were immediately summoned and arrived within minutes. The fact is that the staff and the police did their due diligence and because of the quick and thorough efforts, the perpetrator was caught and arrested. The fact is, the district has responded quickly and has supported the school in making sure this does not happen again. The facts have been documented with the police, the district, and the community. The fact is, I need to send a huge and long overdue shout to the entire staff of Collins. The fact is, the front office, the custodians, the cafeteria staff, the teachers, the aides have all worked tirelessly, showing up every day, working with parents, taking care of boo-boos, calling parents, feeding the kids, cleaning up our messes, preparing food, and preparing lessons in person in packets for students who need to be out. The fact is, you have gone above and beyond your contracted responsibilities to support the students and the families at Collins. The fact is, you deserve my appreciation. Parents, the fact is, if you wanna help, join the PTA. Join and attend SSC meetings. Join the ASAT. Join ELAC. Get badge and volunteer. Mr. Booker, Mr. Franco, Mr. Hill, and Trustee Smith Folds, thank you for having our backs. That's a fact. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Lisa Dispro. Please unmute yourself.
Hi there. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you so much. I wanna thank everyone for all the amazing comments. I am moved by your compassion, by your advocacy for every group in the district. And I wanna concur that all of these needs that you've expressed are of the utmost importance. Tonight, I wanna ask you to grab a pen. Like Stella suggested, please write down the following. and WCCUSDfamiliesAgainstMandatesNotVaccines on Facebook. We are offering a seminar by Unity Project tomorrow at 6:00 PM that we think will be highly important for everyone. It has been a disaster that parents have not been informed that every student has a right to in-person education. That it is illegal and punishable by law to not allow a student on campus because they are unmasked or unvaccinated. And that there are 13 laws, ed codes, and amendments to support these students. And that any person who denies access or sends a student from home from school is in violation and personally held liable. This is the power of parents and we have been denied this information. Please join us at NoMandates2021@gmail.com or WCCUSDfamiliesAgainstMandatesNotVaccines on Facebook. God bless this district.
And our last speaker for tonight is Yolanda Vera Allen. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening, Board of Trustees. Good evening, Board of Trustees, Superintendent Hurst and our WCCUSD community. I am Yolanda Vera Allen and I'm a parent of three students in our district, an educator, and a member of our ASAT Executive Board. Over the last several months, we have been looking at the data of the status of our African-American students. Our disproportionality of our black students continues as suspensions soars and our academic levels creep along. We had no concentrated plan. We must come together to study and plan to truly shift this course. We need district-wide solutions to school site problems. We don't need another presentation that is not solution-based and does not honor the voice and the will of all of our stakeholders. You know, as educators, we committed to see and teach to the child sitting in front of us. Yet, our children remain unseen. We said we would elevate anti-black practices, create anti-racist policies that would support our students and staff so that we all can rise. But instead, we went back to those failed systems when we could have been more innovative and create a more equitable and just educational experience. Please, it is time that we make real, concrete, and actionable plans so that we can really create change. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Okay, I wanna thank everyone who gave public comment this evening. And now, we are moving on to the rest of the agenda. We are going to C4, Agenda Review and Adoption. Dr. Hurst, what are the approximate time that you think we would need for each agenda item?
Thank you, sir, for superintendent communication. That's a 10-minute presentation, some update. For the action item, there's 25 minutes of the presentations for the discussion items and the item G. You have two presentations. There's 15 minutes each. There's 30 minutes.
Okay, thank you. And now, I want to ask Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy to help, you know, keep track like at the time and we keep things moving. Board, I ask you to be succinct in your comments and to pick one or two points for the evening so that we can move along in a good pace. Thank you in advance for your cooperation. Board, are there any adjustments that you wish? that you wish to make for the agenda? Show of hands. Okay, trustee Reckler.
Thank you. I would like to pull D1, Site Safety Plans, for a short discussion, please.
Okay, D1. Site Safety Plan? Okay. Do I see any other hands? Okay. To board, we will go to the motion. So I need a motion to move the, adopt the agenda.
President Christian, um, excuse me one second. Sorry. I'll move that we approve the agenda with D1 for discussion.
All right, and do I have a second?
Reckler, second.
Reckler, second. It's moved by Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy, second by Reckler, and now we'll go to the vote. And we'll start off with our student trustees. Trustee Leo.
Oh, the honest thing.
All right, trustee Flores.
Uh, this is to move agenda item D1?
To adopt the agenda.
Oh, yes. Flores, yes.
All right, next we'll move to trustee Reckler.
Reckler, yes.
Smith Folds, yes.
All right. And trustee Phillips.
Yes, sir.
Uh, trustee clerk Gonzalez-Hoy.
Gonzalez-Hoy, yes.
And myself, yes. And the motion carries, and we'll move to the next item. We will go to C5. Now we're going to approve the minutes for October the twenty-sixth, or October the twentieth, twenty, twenty-second, and October the twenty-seventh, twenty, twenty, twenty-twenty-one. Board, beginning with the minutes of October the twentieth, are there any corrections? All right. Now moving on, make a motion that we approve the agenda.
President Christian, I'll move that we approve the minutes from October, uh, October tenth, twenty-twenty-one. Excuse me.
Point of order, October twentieth.
Twenty, twenty, twenty-seven. The twentieth.
You, sorry, you want a motion for both? Okay, I'll move that we approve the minutes for October twentieth and October twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-one.
All right, can I get a second?
I will second minutes approved as minutes approved as presented with changes.
Okay, it's been moved by Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy, second by trustee Reckler. And now on to the vote. Trustee Leon.
Leon, yes.
Uh, trustee Flores.
Flores, yes.
Trustee Reckler.
Reckler, yes.
Trustee Smith Folds.
President Christian, I don't think I heard you ask for any changes to October twenty-seventh, but Smith Folds is a yes for both.
All right. And trustee Phillips.
Yes, sir.
And Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy.
Gonzalez-Hoy, yes.
And myself, yes. Now we're moving on to C5. C6, so excuse me, C6, the resolution number fifty-three dash twenty-one, twenty-two, Disability Awareness Month for March twenty, twenty-two. And I would turn that over to Dr. Hurst.
Thank you, sir. We actually have a special presentation reading that's going to be introduced by our director, interim director of Special Ed, so and we're going to have her introduce our special students.
So, good evening, everyone. Board President, other trustees, Superintendent Hurst, Cabinet Motors, and educational partners in the audience. I'm very excited to share with you tonight some of our students who are in our full inclusion program at El Cerrito High School. They have made a video of the resolution that they would like to read. I want to, well, I would be remiss if I didn't share this, that although Disability Awareness Month is in March, Disability Awareness, Equity, and Inclusion is three hundred and sixty-five days a year. And so I, as a parent of a child with special needs who has matriculated through this district and is now nineteen and continuing, and as your interim self-director, I'm going to continue to advocate for inclusion, for increased funding, to remove barriers that prevent our students from being inclusive in all aspects of our education and across our system. Um, I would also like to thank everyone who supports our students with special needs, our teachers, our paraprofessionals, our related providers, administrators, and educational partners. Two things that will be happening this month, we will be celebrating all individuals who make a difference. This has been going on for over thirty-five years in our district. It will be this Friday, March fourth, from seven PM to eight PM via Zoom. And as one of our community members mentioned, we have our monthly CAC meeting, our Community Advisory Council. It will meet this Monday at five-thirty, um, March seventh, at five-thirty to eight-thirty. So if you want to get involved and you want, and you believe in supporting inclusion, please join us at both events. And now, without further ado, our students reading the resolution.
Point of order, President Christian, we can't hear it on Zoom. We can't hear it.
Okay. Can we get it fixed from that end?
hardships, barriers, and challenges they encounter, individuals
proclamation just the words of the March twenty-two, whereas individuals with disabilities are a significant and vulnerable group in our society.
Whereas students with disabilities represented in all grades and programs, the West Contra Costa Unified School District, from impetus to boss high school, and
diversity and improvement through students with physical disabilities, hearing impaired, visual impaired, learning disabilities, developmental disabilities, emotional disabilities, autism, and emotional disabilities.
And whereas despite the hardships, barriers, and challenges they encounter, individuals with disabilities have made substantial historical, cultural, social, economic, and other contributions that enrich our society, and
whereas the West Contra Costa District embraces individuals with disabilities as a part of its ongoing commitment to appreciating and valuing the diversity of our population, and
there will be a positive effect in society as our students gain a greater understanding and appreciation for those citizens who have disabilities, and all of our students should be educated, no restrictions, restrictive environment, and fully included to the greatest degree appropriate, both in education and the greatest sign. Therefore, be it resolved on February sixteen, two thousand two ninety-two, that the West Contra Costa Unified Schools District Board of Education proclaims the month of March two thousand twenty-one as Disability Awareness Month and encourages all of its schools to commemorate this occasion with appropriate instructional activities and be it further.
Resolve the Board of Education directs that suitable prepared copies of this resolution be distributed to all schools and offices in the West Contra Costa Unified School District.
Thank you all for listening. I want to say that when we asked the students, the first thing they told the teacher, Ms. Iva Palmer, who is phenomenal, they told her, you know, we don't do public speaking. So I am so happy that they decided to do the video, but one of these days, we are going to have them doing public speaking. That's what the program is about. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Board, are there any clarifying questions you wish to make on this resolution that was given?
President Christian.
Yes, go ahead.
Um, I want to make sure that we are recognizing March twenty-twenty-two, because it said twenty-twenty-one in the video, but we are recognizing March twenty-twenty-two and make sure that we are therefore be resolved on March second, twenty-twenty-two. And Ms. Neely Johnson, thank you so much for making sure that we saw the students who we are representing, sitting on the dais. Thank you so very much, and they did an excellent job. Thank you, President Christian. That is everything.
All right, thank you. All right, there any others? All right. May I have a motion?
President Christian, I'll move resolution number fifty-three dash twenty-one, twenty-two, making March twenty-twenty-two Disability Awareness Month with the changes trustee Smith Folds suggested to the resolution.
I second.
And it's second by trustee Smith Folds? Okay. And now we'll move on to the vote, and we will go with trustee Leon.
Leon, yes.
Trustee Flores.
Flores, yes.
Trustee Reckler.
Thank you so much to the students. That was terrific. And Reckler, yes.
Uh, trustees, Smith Falls.
Smith Falls, yes.
Trustee Phillips.
Yes, sir.
All right, Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy.
Gonzalez-Hoy, yes.
All right, and I am a yes. And the motion carries. And we now move on to the next agenda item. We go to item D, the consent items. And the consent items are considered, uh, routine and will be enacted, approved, and adopted by one motion unless a request for removal, a discussion, or explanation is reviewed. Any consent item that are pulled will be heard after the discussion items and reports. So we had the consent item, so.
President Christian, I'll make a motion to approve the consent items.
All right, it's been moved by Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy to, and do I have a second?
Reckler will second minus D1, which we already pulled.
All right, it was second by trustee Reckler. And now we'll go on to the vote. Trustee Leon.
Oh, can we clarify which item is getting pulled? Yeah, yes.
Trustee Flores.
Flores, yes.
Trustee Reckler.
Reckler, yes.
Trustee Smith Folds.
Smith Falls, yes.
Uh, trustee Phillips.
Yes, sir.
Trustee Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy.
Gonzalez-Hoy, yes.
And I am a yes, and the motion carries. And now we proceed on to item E, which will be the superintendent report, and Dr. Hurst, this is in your hands.
Thank you very much, sir. If you could bring up the presentation, please. And we're going to turn the memoriam over to trustee Gonzalez-Hoy.
Thank you very much, Dr. Hurst, for letting me do this, this part. Unfortunately, my good friend, Amy Evangelista Marqueta, passed away on February eighteenth. She was speech patho-, speech pathologist or therapist at Miravista Elementary School. She was, she had, she was at the age of fifty-two. Ms. Evangelista Marqueta was an unforgettable presence at Miravista for twenty years, a trusted colleague and champion for her students, full of life with a beautiful laugh. She often called her colleagues and the students her bees after the school's mascot. Ms. Evangelista Marqueta had a deep faith in God and was beloved by everybody at her school. school. She was also a beloved wife, daughter, sister, aunt, grand aunt, and friend, and will be missed by so many. Our thoughts go out to the family and friends in the loss of their beloved one, and I just want to thank her personally for all the work that she did in our district, which had a huge impact on not just our students, but on many of us. So, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Hurst. Pass it back to you.
And thank you very much, sir. We can move to the next slide, please. And the next one. So we wanted to start off by just sharing that March is also Women's History Month. And we wanted to acknowledge all women and young women and girls as well, in our district, also across our nation. And just to give a brief history as well, we know that history, Women's History Month began as a local celebration, actually Santa Rosa, California. The Education Task Force of Sonoma County Commission of the Status of Woman planned and executed a Women's History Week, which was a celebration in 1978. Organizers at that time selected the week of March 8 to correspond with International Women's Day, which was a global day celebrating the social, economic, cultural, and political achievements of women. This took place first on March 8, 1911. Presidents continued this practice of the National Women's History Week in March until 1987, when it was passed by Congress to become a law. And it became at that time for the month of March, Women's History Month. So now we're here, and Women's History Month is set aside for the entire month of March to celebrate the contributions of women and girls to history, to culture, and society. And even our current president says very well that this is an opportunity to honor the generations of trailblazing women and girls who have built our nation, shaped our progress, and strengthened our character as people. So we wanted to take this time also to acknowledge this month as Women's History Month, and we will be coming back to the board at our next board meeting with a formal resolution. Next slide. So I'm here to provide an update on the masking mandate that we had in place. We wanted to share that on February 28, I'm sure we all have been following this, Governor Gavin Newsom announced an update to the state masking guidance. So what he did essentially is move from a mask requirement to mask recommendations. He also had guidance that had been passed on to CDPH, K-12 guidance, the superintendents across our county had conversations about this as well, around what's going to happen for indoor masking as well for March 11. He did share as well that this was based on declining case rates and declines in hospitalizations also. Next slide. Next slide. So this is the information that was shared with the superintendents in our meeting yesterday, which I'm sure is the same information that Gavin Newsom was presented as well. And looking over a two-week period, the state, across the state, we were looking at the decline in several areas. So the decline in the number of cases, decline in case rate, and you can see the significant difference between February 14 and February 28, is a decline by 66% in cases and case rate. Also, in that two-week period, decline in hospitalization decreased by 48%. And pediatric hospitalizations declined by 47%. Decline in hospital admissions are 50%. And also decline in test positivity by 53%. Next slide. So in all the conversations with the superintendents across the county, they're pretty consistent in what they're all doing. We are one of the districts that did have an outdoor masking mandate, so we wanted to address this today. So we did share this with the board earlier and sent this out to internal and external stakeholders, but wanted to make it public in this setting, that starting Thursday, tomorrow, March 3, that outdoor masking will no longer be required for our WCCUSD students and employees. However, we also want to make it clear that students and employees are still required to wear masks indoors at this time. Masks will not be required for students outside during the lunch period. We also wanted to share that passing periods, breezeways are not considered outdoors, so the expectation is that mask will be worn during those portions. And also, we wanted to share that we're going to closely monitor how our schools adapt to this new guidance, and then we'll make adjustments as necessary if the transmission rates change, or if anything happens with state guidelines. Next slide. And that is my update for masking.
Okay, board, I'm looking for clarifying questions or technical questions on the superintendent report.
President Christian, I have some questions.
Okay, um, let me do this, trustee Smithfold, before we, uh, go with the questions. I'm going to turn it back over to Dr. Hurst, because he need to mention about the student trustees.
I just wanted to mention, we also have an item under Superintendent Communications now on a regular ongoing basis, that we have our student trustee report as well. So I wanted to share that with our Board of Trustees.
So, hello. So we will be doing student presentations, starting this board meeting on March 2. So regarding updates on school site councils as of now, trustee Flores and I have been working diligently with Mr. Tashaka Meriwether, our district's K-12 coordinator, on restarting a all-student congress. The all-student congress will include two representatives from each school site, containing a sixth to 12th grade, and will generate opinions and concerns to direct to the board from each individual school site. Applications were sent out two weeks ago and have closed since February 28. And we're now working on selecting the candidates to, to be put onto the all-student congress board. Trustee Flores and I are working to seeing the full return of the all-student congress and the student presentations, maybe a PowerPoint on March 16 board meeting. And on top of this, both of the student trustees now have a district email located on the board's district homepage, would be utilizing our email to take suggestions and concerns from students and parents alike regarding school sites. Thank you.
Uh, yeah, um, hello, everybody. As many of you know, I am a student at Richmond High, and I would like to give a huge shout out to the Richmond High School Marching Man for representing the school by attending one of the top five most biggest popular Chinese New Year's parade in the world at San Francisco with over 3 million people watching. And I want to also give another shout out to our school, or the band director, Mr. Wilkie, for working hard, as well for making this happen for all of us and our school, and for bringing back and helping the marching man grow each year. The RHS marching man practiced and worked super hard and gave a great performance. They appeared on KTVU. And if any of you guys are interested, the Facebook live stream is found at the Chinese Parade on Instagram and Facebook. Lastly, I would also like to give another shout out to the RHS Boys Soccer Team for representing by making it to the NCS, NCS finals. Although they lost 1 to 0 against Redwood High, they worked very hard and gave it their very best. So, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to thank our student trustees giving the updated information. And now we go to clarifying questions. And I know we had trustee Smithfalls.
Thank you, President Christian. Thank you, student trustees, for that wonderful update with schools, and congratulations to Richmond High School on both fronts. What type of mask will be worn inside? What's the acceptable mask to be worn inside? Has that changed?
The mask inside has not changed. We'll still be issuing out the KN95s.
So inside masking students are still not to wear cloth masks? It's surgical or it's KN95? Is that accurate, Dr.?
That is accurate.
Thank you. And then you explained that awnings, outdoor awnings, and I'm speaking specifically to like Hercules Middle School and Hercules High School, when it's outdoor awnings and passing period going from PE to room 503, students are to still wear masks outside because that's considered a passing period. Is that accurate?
That is accurate, absolutely.
Thank you so much. And my final question is, do the discipline matrix stand with the new enforcement of the outdoor mask? For example, it was, you get a warning, or you know, the whole matrix we had about masking. Does that, does that matrix shift at all, or the matrix still stay the same?
Matrix will stay the same, but just one second, trustee Smithfalls, let me just verify that. That is correct. That is correct. It will stay the same.
Thank you so much. Those are all of my questions.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Phillips.
Dr. Hurst, for students and families that feel comfortable wearing their mask outside, and that would like to continue doing that, are they allowed to do that? They are allowed to continue to wear masks if they desire to. Is there going to be any communication, particularly in the elementary schools, that students who wish to wear their mask or not to be pressured not to, or not to be bullied for doing that? Yes, sir. Our Director of Communications is here and he's listening, so we'll get that communication out. Thank you, sir.
All right. If there's no other clarified questions, we will move on. And we will go to the next agenda item, which would be item F, action item. Okay, board, the item F1, 2022, CS BA Delegate Assembly Election. And Dr. Hurst, I believe we are sharing this item, so go ahead.
If there are, there's a packet that had four names, and we're going to ask if there could be a motion for those candidates, and then we will have a second, and then we'll do a vote.
Okay, board, I am making a call for the nomination for the CS BA Delegate Assembly. And any board member may nominate up to three candidates from the list. And we will add for nomination.
Mr. Chair, if I could recommend that we actually pull the members on this item, because each member gets to vote for up to three. So if they could, if each member could give us the three people that they vote for, then we can tally at the end, and that would be the motion that would carry forward once we know those results.
Okay.
Clerk Gonzalez Hoi. President Christian, sorry, I just wanted to ask a clarifying question to the parliamentarian or to you, if our student trustees are included. I'm assuming that probably they are, they are included. Okay, okay. That's good to know.
President Christian, did the student trustees get the information?
Um, we get the clarified information right now.
President Christian, I just shared that sheet with them.
Okay, appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, board, so we nominate.
I know this is a little confusing. So these folks have already been nominated. What we're doing is we are voting to see who this board is going to vote for of the four nominees. We get to choose three. There are three open positions. Do you need some names?
All right, Clerk Gonzalez Hoi.
Thank you, President Christian. I just wanted to ask through you if there was anyone on our board who knows these people who would like to give us a recommendation. I personally don't know any of the four, so I really don't know who to vote for, except for what I looked on LinkedIn. So if anyone on our board has a recommendation, I would love to hear it. Probably that's how I would base my vote.
Uh, trustee Reckler.
I do, I didn't, I do know Ms. Ramos from John Sweat. She's been involved for years, very active, very even tempered, smart, pro-students, pro-school boards, pro-teacher, well-spoken, and I've enjoyed the work I've done with her, so I do recommend her. The other, the others, I don't know, but I do know her personally. Thank you.
Okay.
And President Christian, if it's okay with you, I'll start on the voting then.
Yes, go ahead.
Um, I will nominate or vote, excuse me, parliamentary, and I'm not sure which of the two I should use. Vote, vote. I would vote for Marina Ramos, Mary Helen Rocha, and Pauline, all red.
I would like to second that nomination.
I'm sorry, we're only going to give, each member's going to give the three people that they're voting for, and then at the end, we'll have the motion with the totals.
Is that me? Okay. Close the sun this way. Clerk Gonzalez Hoi.
Apologize, yeah, happy to repeat. And just so everybody know, I just chose one from Liberty Union just to spread the, the wealth on, on the nominations. So I, I voted for Pauline Alred, Marina Ramos, and Mary Helen Rocha.
Okay. Thank you. Next, we'll go to trustee, trustee Reckler.
I, I, I ditto to trustee Gonzalez Hoi, trustee clerk Gonzalez Hoi, thank you.
All right. All right, thank you. Next, we go to trustee Smith Fole.
The only nominee that I know of, and I don't know personally, but I know the work of, is Ms. Ramos, so I will vote for Ms. Ramos only. Marina, thank you.
All right, thank you. Next, we go to trustee Phillips.
So I'm only going to vote for two, and it's Ramos and Rocha.
All right, thank you. Myself, oh, let me go to student trustees, and then I'll come back to myself. Student trustee, trustee Leon.
I'll put my vote in for Marina Ramos, John Sweat, yes.
Okay, trustee Flores.
Um, I agree with, well, I'll just go by what I've heard. I heard that Marina Ramos has done a good job, and I believe that. So I'll just vote for Marina Ramos since I also don't, haven't heard anything from Yolana, Pauline, or Mary Helen. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And then for me, I will follow the same as ditto, the same as trustee Reckler and from there. All right, we'll move for the board to the board to pass
Cast vote.
Cast vote for Pauline. Marina Rosa. Ramos. And Mary Helen. All right, do we have someone to second?
I'll second that, President Christian.
It's been second. And now to the vote. And we'll start off with the student trustees.
Leon is.
Trustee Flores.
I'm sorry, what are we voting for again?
We're doing the vote.
Point of order, President Christian.
Go ahead.
Are we voting as a slate or are we voting on the individuals?
We voted for three individuals. There were totals. Uh, the board voted three votes for Alred, five votes for Ramos, and four votes for Roca.
Thank you. When we cast this vote right now, are we casting a vote for all three of those people or are we casting a vote individually? I guess we're casting a vote for all three. Is that what you're telling me?
Correct.
Thank you.
All right. So now we'll proceed on to the vote. Start off with student trustees again. Student trustee Leon.
Leon, yes.
Trustee Flores.
Flores, yes.
Trustee Reckler.
Reckler, yes.
Trustee Smith Foles.
Smith Foles, yes.
Trustee Phillips.
Yes.
Clerk Gonzalez Hoi.
Gonzalez Hoi, yes.
And myself is a yes. And it carries, motion carries. All right. Thank you. Now we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is F2. It's the vaccine mandate recommendation. And I would turn that over to Dr. Hurst.
Thank you, Mr. President. Can we bring up the presentation, please? And if we can go to the, the next slide, please. So before beginning, we'd first like to share our appreciation, uh, board for just the flexibility and allowing us time to really dive into the, the care system and also take an opportunity to thank our separate directors, Sonya Neely Johnson and other staff and our nurses who worked even during the the break, really diving to the care system, getting all the information so that we could bring it back for this board meeting. And we wanted to start with our recommendation by just reminding everyone that this was really a, a state mandate. It is a state mandate. So we wanted to remind everyone that when this came out October the first from Governor Newsom, that he did present a first phase. It was focused on students grade seven through 12, but also employees, also paraprofessionals. Same time, we had our own mandate going, but we wanted to just remind everyone that this is a state mandate. And also based on the current information, and we understand that guidance is changing and things is changing across the state as well. But the current information we have is that the state mandate has it starting in July 1st, 2022. One of the things to point out as well that we wanted to share is that Governor Newsom did provide the opportunity for districts to have stricter measures in place. So going into the next slide.
So on this slide, you'll see our current status. So as Dr. Hurst said, our nurses worked diligently over the break. And at this point, we are at eighty-seven percent of our students aged 12 and up vaccinated. So that means that they either are fully vaccinated with two doses or have won the first dose. So in addition to the eighty-seven percent, which is an important number to remember, is the yellow star where you see no response. So at present, we have 1,499 students whose status we do not know. That is either because the student or family has not uploaded their vax card into Power School or when the nurses went into the care, the state immunization system, they could not find the students. Or they found the students and the student did not have COVID vaccination data in the system. So that 1,499 is our focus area going forward. Next slide.
Good evening, board and, and community parents. I'm going to talk about our continuity of instruction and some of the implications with the vaccine mandate as we make our decisions. So one, I wanted to talk about our graduation requirement, which is 225 credits. And really wanting to identify that we have 181 seniors currently who are unvaccinated. And really wanting to identify that we could have or see an increase in dropout rates if our seniors choose to go unvaccinated. However, there are other options for our students in which students could decide according to AB 104 to graduate early with 130 credits, which would make them junior college or trade school eligible. We also want to ensure that they have 15 days of instruction. When any decision is made, you need 15 days of instruction to receive grades or credits. Also want to just identify and remind us that we cannot enroll students in independent study. Parents have to agree and sign a master agreement for independent study. And I also wanted to include the independent study guidelines from CDE, which are also attached. Also want to just talk about sped and English language students. Just really wanting to emphasize that even with our virtual options, we do not necessarily have the options to ensure that all students in sped will be able to go to independent study because their IEP has to show that they can actually be placed in independent study. And so we have to offer FAP. Also, we also do not have ELD one and two in our virtual academy. And so if we have seniors or juniors or actually any of our high school students who are in any of our ELD courses, there are implications for them as ELD is not offered in the UC course portal for our independent study classes. Next slide. Next slide. I'm sorry. Can you go back, Rosa? I'm sorry. Okay, there we go. In terms of continuity of instruction, we also wanted to talk about social emotional learning and the implications. And just really wanting to emphasize through research, I attached two articles for the community and for the board around one from our US General Surgeon, which is around protecting youth mental health, knowing all of the implications from COVID. Just really wanting to ensure that we're providing that same stability, really considering isolation and also the implications of students dealing with social change or changes to their schedule or changes to their environment during this time period. So really wanting to offer these resources for us to consider as we're thinking about the social emotional learning of our students and a shift to their schedule this school year. Next slide. Also wanting to identify, as we know, we do have our Vista Virtual Academy, which has been adamantly and vigorously enrolling students. As we can see now, as of 2/28, we have 395 students enrolled. We still have 273 on the waitlist. And we do have 26 who are in process of transferring. So we are rapidly enrolling, but just wanted to ensure that the board also had this information on where we are with Vista Virtual in terms of spaces for students who are currently unvaccinated. Next slide. Thank you.
So one of the things that we have to take into account is, is just the impact that, that we're seeing on the organization as a whole. Not only just through natural trends with birth rates, but also as a result of COVID. On the left-hand side, you see the enrollment over the last five years, and you see that we've, during the pre-COVID period, we had kind of a natural attrition you might see for a district of this size in this part of the state. That typical one and a half to two and a half percent declining enrollment that you were accustomed to dealing with. But as a result of COVID, we saw a rather precipitous drop in the last two years. Complicating the matters even further, if you look on the right-hand side, we see the ADA trends. That's the number of days students are in their seats as a proportion of the year. Looking at the first five months of each of the last three years, so blue is 1920, orange is 2021, and of course, gray is this year. And what we see is the students that we do have are, are physically in their seats or completing those independent study packets at a lower frequency than they have in prior years. So enrollment's down and ADA as a trend of total enrollment is down, meaning our funding is down significantly as a result. Next slide, please.
Good evening, board and members of the community. This is Ryan Phillips, District Communications Director. This slide shows the remaining students who have yet to respond. So we can see that it's broken up by school feeder area. Breaking down this data of these students, we found that eighty-one percent are at schools at the secondary level. That includes fifty-two percent at the high school level. And of this, forty-nine percent are students in Richmond schools. Next slide, please. Here's some strategies on how we will collect more student vaccination cards and identify the status of students. With our limited resources and time, we determine that the best course of action is to focus on schools and areas with the highest number of remaining students. So specifically, that means a focus on secondary schools and schools in Richmond. This more targeted outreach means more direct contact with schools. We'll be partnering with schools to host events and around vaccine promotion and incentivize with prizes with individual school raffles and gift cards and other prizes for students who let us know their status. Teachers have direct contact with students, of course, so we'll be looking to our educators for assistance with this. We are updating a toolkit with messages for teachers that we previously have shared with UTR. We appreciate their partnership. We're also working on a plan to involve teachers in assisting students in uploading their cards. Communications Department is also working with our district's Community Engagement Department on a comprehensive volunteer plan. We're looking at, to roll out to the community this week. We'll be asking for volunteers to adopt a school and help improve the vaccination rate. It takes about a month to process a new volunteer, which is why we want to get this campaign running as soon as possible. And also why we're looking at a 10-week commitment to make sure this happens this school year. Some ideas that we have on what volunteers can do is assist families and students in uploading their vaccination cards. Host weekly information tables at a campus with vaccination facts. Coordinate with school administrators and teachers on the site's numbers. Help promote a school-wide raffle and promote the vaccination clinics. And also distribute small gift cards such as lunch cards for local businesses to students to, to bring in their card to campus to upload. While we are looking for volunteer support, each of our secondary school sites, we will prioritize assignments at Richmond schools first. Thank you. Next slide, please.
So in closing out, we'd like to share that our recommendation to the Board of Directors is that we remain in compliance with the current information that we have right now from the state so that we align with that vaccine mandate from Governor Newsom and have an enforcement date of July 1st, 2022. But also wanted to share part of that recommendation that we, as a district, is coming back to the board on a monthly basis and we're providing updates to the Board of Trustees on the status of where we are with getting those 1,500 students approximately fully vaccinated. So that is our recommendation. Mr. President, we'll turn it back to you for questions.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Hurst, for the presentation. And now we're asked aboard, it's a clarified discussion, questions?
President Christian, I have some questions.
Okay.
May I go ahead?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you.
Point of order. And I'm just saying this to cut down on confusion. Are we following the order that we agreed on tonight? And I'm just saying this to cut down on confusion, are we following the order that we agreed on tonight? Are we doing something else?
I apologize to our parliamentarian, we can't hear, I I can't hear you from this side.
I'm sorry, so the way that the roll call works will be for voting, but when asking for. Technical or clarifying questions. Or asking if there is any discussion. You have to seek recognition, just like the trustee did, so if you have a question. Raise your hand, get recognized by the chair. And then there's no order to that, but we won't be polling individually.
So it's just whoever raises their hand first gets to go?
Perfect.
All right.
All right, thank you. Now we go to trustee Smith Foles.
Thank you, so I have a a couple of questions, or just want to make sure that I'm clearly hearing. Um, everything, Ms. Logan, so there's a total of two thousand and sixty-one students who could be impacted, that's the one thousand four hundred and ninety-nine with no response. The four hundred and ten with one dose, the eighty-five that um. Said no right now, but will, the sixty-two that planned to, and the five medical exemptions, is that accurate?
That is correct.
Thank you so much. And then, Ms. Logan, could you? It tell me, it said could not find the student, can you explain that? It does that mean that the student may have disenrolled from the district and we have to verify that? What is could not find the student mean?
So there's several scenarios as to why a student would not be in the care system, it could be that the student came from another state. Or another country, perhaps they were even vaccinated in that other state or other country, we just don't have record of that in our state immunization system. Another reason could be if the student goes to a medical provider that does not upload into care. Most of the large do Kaiser, et cetera, but there are some private providers that do not, therefore they would not be in care.
Thank you so much for that clarification. And then we said there are a hundred and eighty-one seniors, I don't need this right now, but I would love to have that um, number disaggregated. Uh, by race, how many seniors that we have that are a hundred and eighty-one racially broken down, I don't need it right now, but I would love to have that information. And then I also, um, Ms. Martin would love to have the app information about. Of that two thousand and sixty-one students, how many are E L D one or two, and how many are sped? I don't need that information right now, but I would like to have that information. Um, Dr. Hurst, if a parent says no to independent study. If a parent says no to independent study, will their student still be allowed to go in person?
So we are obligated to educate uh, our students. And we have been advised that we will be violating the students' constitutional rights. Um, otherwise, so we are obligated to educate the students.
Thank you so much. Ms. Martin, on slide six, the number of twenty-six students who are in process of transferring to virtual school. And the two hundred and seventy-three, if I could have information at a later time about the disaggregation of those numbers also, I would appreciate it. And then um. The, we had a slide that showed us about A D A. Can I have an explanation, or can you share out what each student is? There, there is no gentle way of saying it, but what's the the amount of money attached to each student? Right, so elementary school students, if they show up every day. There a certain amount of money in the bucket, middle school students and high school students, could I get that information shared out, please?
Absolutely, I have that available uh, in front of me, uh, because it's a very important number when we're working up budget numbers. So when we look at average daily attendance funded by the local control funding formula, that's funded by grade span. So in this case, kindergarten through third grade students generate sixty dollars ninety-three cents per day that they're in attendance. Students in fourth to sixth grades generate fifty-six dollars and two cents. Seventh and eighth graders generate fifty-seven dollars and sixty-seven cents, while ninth through twelfth graders generate sixty-eight dollars and fifty-eight cents per day of attendance.
And do we have projections about if that will increase next year or decrease the school year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three?
The, the assumption is that, that the, the dip that we've seen this year. In in, since it's larger than in comparison to prior years, that there's going to be a rebound. Uh, especially as we expect more and more students to be physically present versus an independent study for a greater portion of the year.
Thank you so much for that answer. And then. Dr. Hurst, I have two, two last questions, well, actually, I'm sorry, three last questions, Mr. Phillips, you said, Mr. Ryan Phillips. You said that these events will take place during the school day, is that what I heard? And when I talk about the events, I'm talking about um, the slide that talks about hosting events and having the volunteers, will those events be taking place during the school day?
That hasn't necessarily been determined, but most likely, yes, they would happen during the school day. Uh, but possibly on, on the weekends as well.
Okay, thank you so much, and Dr. Hurst, my last two questions are. One, will W C C U S D be ready in July twenty twenty-two?
So I would say um, if every single student were able to track down and they're fully vaccinated. Then yes, so I think we shared the data, so we can make the board aware of the current reality. Um, so we, we all understand that there is a waitlist. We all understand, even if there is a small number of students and we have a waitlist, then. There's, it's impossible for us to be ready, so even if it's a small number of students, we will not be ready. So just to answer your question. We either have everyone taken care of. Or we cannot do that.
Thank you, and Dr. Hurst, my final question is. If July, if the July twenty, July first, twenty twenty-two date stands, what's the impact on summer school?
I'm gonna let um, Ms. Martin speak about that, the impact on summer school.
Trustee Smith Foles, could you repeat the question one more time for me? I heard the impact on summer school, but I didn't hear the first part.
Yes, ma'am, so if we stay with July first, twenty twenty-two as the deadline, right? That's, we're in the middle of summer school, W C C U S D would be in the middle of summer school, so then. I guess my question is, what then is the impact, right? So where do those kids go? If they're not allowed to be in person because the vaccine mandate is now July first, twenty twenty-two, where do they go July second? Or that next school day, I'm not looking at a calendar, but my, I think my question still stands.
Um, I'm gonna come back to you after I talk with Cabinet a little bit more, because it's a very good question, I mean, essentially, it would be the same. Scenario if it were, um, you know, during the school year, because essentially the, the student could say. I won't be vaccinated and therefore we still have to provide the services of summer school. Um, and then, you know, there wouldn't be necessarily an independent study, there has not been an offering yet of independent study virtually um, for. Summer school, I, I would probably need to go back and also discuss that with the team as well.
Thank you so much, those are all of my questions, President uh, Christian, thank you for the presentation.
Okay. Are there any other clarify questions? Uh, trustee Phillips?
I'm gonna let trustee Reckler go first. I can't, well, I haven't raised, I, 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 I haven't raised my hand yet. Um, I was just. Uh, probably will later.
Okay, trustee Reckler.
So I would like the parliamentarian and the chair to try to work together to perhaps recognize people in order. Okay, so. To recognize people in order of the voting, and if people don't raise their hand, it's okay, because otherwise I imagine that there could be a. Run to be recognized first, and so. So we could have a little bit of an order and have people recognize, so I just would like you to consider that for, for the future. Thank you, so as far as questions. Um, so first, I just want to thank everybody who worked in the care system over the break, really appreciate that. And then I would like to also ask Dr. Hurst. Can you please talk a little bit about the governor? And uh, encouraging districts to be stricter than the state is what I thought I heard, could you expand on that a little bit?
Yeah, so in the presentation. Uh, in, in the mandate, the Governor Newsom actually allowed. Um, us to set a more stringent um, date, so the date step by the state was July the first. So a scenario for a district could be. Oh, we want to do a vaccine mandate, but we want to set it prior to before July the first. So the state did actually allow districts to say, for instance, set a. Vaccine mandate for February or for March, so that was allowable.
Okay, thank you, and then the July first date, we did have some feedback a couple of meetings ago. Um, where uh, Dr. Dalton actually recommended the date, does that still align with her? Thought she had some pretty good ideas about why and. Um, you had some pushback about district capability and the, the avail- the availability, ability of staff, if you could address that?
Yes, I'm sorry, I don't remember uh, what Dr. Dalton's uh, recommendation was. Uh, but I, I think our pushback was. Around the numbers, and even now as we consider the fourteen ninety-nine, and even following through on those who have one. Uh, vaccination. As we shared, even getting the volunteers involved and also following up on those approximately two thousand. Uh, students, it is gonna take some time. So, one of the things we said is we wanted to just align with what the state. Uh, has currently, which is July the first, and that really allows us time to really track down. Individually and have those conversations and incentives for those students. So for us, it's really been the pushback about the number of students that we have to follow through on and giving us time to do that.
Okay, thank you, and then if I can ask. Um. Mr. McIntyre, what is month four and what is month five on that slide?
Sure, would it be possible to pull that slide back up, please? I believe it's slide eight on the last presentation.
It's, it's slide seven.
Seven.
So really what I want to know is, is month five, January, and what are you seeing now is really the question.
Sh- so unfortunately, month six was worse than month five. Uh, and, and that is, is consistent with what we saw with, you know, the Omnicron. Uh, and, and the, in the. Well, it just, it, it's actually worse than month five, and so we're, we're definitely. Uh, I know staff is working really hard for the, for the rebound and, and we're saying the last few days, last week. Or since returning from, you know, from the break, we're hoping that the numbers will have rebounded.
So what's month five, is month five December or is month five January?
Uh, month five is, is January, month six, month five is. Is December, month six is January, thank you, we have our attendance specialist here. So month five is December, that, that we're seeing here on this slide, month six is January, when we're going through all the Omnicron, which is why it was worse.
What was the driver for month five, because that was. Two weeks, that was like what, ten school days or?
It, it, what we do, it does certainly split uh, split school days, but a- as a ratio of the days offered, so. I, I, I haven't dug into the driver behind that, that, that is. It's not atypical to have a dip in that month, but not a dip of this consequence, it's usually more the dip like you see between months. Like three between two and four, that small little zag.
So we didn't divide this by thirty-one days in December, we decided that we divided this by the actual school days.
Correct.
Okay, that's all I have, thank you.
You have a question?
Is this questions and comments together, like we've been doing, or just questions? So it's just questions right now?
Yes.
I don't have any questions.
All right. I'll see, any others? All right, I'd like to have a motion. Uh, that we move. Capacity again.
I, I, I make a motion that we align, and uh, and I just want to make sure this, I'm saying this right, Dr. Hurst, I make a motion that we align our date with the state.
All right, and is there a second?
I will second that we align with the date. But our content is staying the same, correct? All right, I'll second that.
All right, so it's been second. Move by Mr. Phillips. Trustee Phillips and. And the second by trustee Reckler. And now we move on to any discussion? Or comment? Trustee Phillips?
So there are a few things that I, I want to say. Um, and I want to, one, attempt to clarify some things. Um. My understanding is if we align with the state. Um, and we're following the direction of the state, uh, at that point. Um. If we don't have the capacity to serve uh, unvaccinated uh, children. Um, that it's kind of a moot issue, a- a- and the reason why it's an issue right now. Is because we're doing it unilaterally. But if the state. Creates a rule. And they have, it just hasn't kicked in yet, if the state creates a rule. That the children have to be vaccinated, that is no longer us acting unilaterally. At that point. If there are children who are not vaccinated. I don't believe that we have to do anything to accommodate those children. Because at that point, the state is saying that they have to have the immunizations. So for example, if there is um, pick any of the immunizations that are on the list. If a child shows up with one of those immunizations, we don't have to, without the immunization. We don't have to do anything to accommodate them. All of these extra things that we've been discussing over and over, it's because we are acting unilaterally. Once we fall in line with the state, I don't believe that that will continue to be an issue. So that's the first thing that I want to say, just to clarify that. Um, and I could be wrong, I've been wrong before, but I don't think I am. Um, I'm gonna tell you why I, I'm supporting this. Um, I did support having a vaccine mandate. Uh, I think that it was extremely important, not I did, I do support having a vaccine mandate. I think it's extremely important uh, for our uh, students, for our staff, and for our families. Um, but when we voted to do this, um. Folks hadn't stepped up. At the state level. There was uh, an absence of leadership. At the time we voted to do this. And I think that this board, our superintendent and our staff, I think that we were extremely courageous. And we were willing to stand in the breach because other people wouldn't. After we did that. The state stepped up and did its part. Once the state did its part. It was no longer, even though we had put something in place, it was really no longer in, uh, necessary. For us to frankly lead. We had to lead because others were not. But just like we had the courage to lead when there was an absence of leadership and there was an absence, when folks above us did their part, I think we also needed and need to have the humility to, to follow. They have access to all the latest information. They have access to the public health experts. They have everything. And in a normal situation, we would be following them. And the only reason we weren't following them is because they weren't leading. Now they are. And I'm okay with us stepping back into the space that we frankly are supposed to be in. And so I'm okay. I'm okay. And I will say this to the community uh and anyone who is listening. If a situation ever comes up again, and hopefully this situation never does come up again, but if a situation ever comes up again and uh the state doesn't step up and, and lead, I think this board will step up and lead again. Because I think that this board consists of those kinds of people who are not afraid to take risks, who are not afraid uh to challenge status quo and who frankly are not afraid to do what's necessary to keep people safe. That's who we are and that's what we did. But we're listening to Dr. Hurst. We're listening to staff right now. They're saying that eighty-seven percent of the students are already vaccinated. So, I mean, we've essentially, and I'm not a doctor, but we've essentially achieved herd immunity amongst our own students because of all of the steps that we proactive steps that we have taken. In addition to that, and I'm just going to be flat out honest about it. If we have fifteen hundred kids who we have not accounted for, that's the equivalent of a high school. A high school, a whole high school. So like, just imagine we snapped our fingers and duplicated Elsarito. Or we snapped our fingers and duplicated Richmond High School. We, in all honesty, don't have space, vacant space to put fifteen hundred kids in. We don't, the place, the space doesn't exist. So I know folks want us to move forward and I know they want us to do this thing right now. But there is literally not a space to put fifteen hundred children. And right now, we would have to find a space to put fifteen hundred children because once again, we're acting unilaterally. We are not acting under the umbrella or the coverage or even the protection in that sense of this, of the state. So we have to do all these other things. So we don't violate anyone's rights. But again, after the state's deadline kicks in, if kids come to school and the state has said that they have to have the COVID nineteen vaccination or immunization and, and they don't have it, they're not coming to school. And that's not our fault. That has nothing to do with us. That is a state requirement. And so I know some folks may think that they are achieving a victory. If this policy that we have passed doesn't get implemented right now, they're really not. Because come July, the state is essentially making a rule that you can't come here and you can't send your kid here unless they have the vaccine. So my suggestion to everybody is to get your kids vaccinated. My kids are vaccinated. The ones that are, I have four children. Three of them are five or up. All three of them are fully vaccinated. The only one that's not vaccinated is three, is the three-year-old. Everybody else in the household is vaccinated. Get your kids vaccinated. It's the safest thing to do. It helps you. It helps the community. And there is a time coming. And we, and here's the other thing, the governor's date is the governor's date. We can't move that. So you could come here and you could petition the board. You could send mean nasty emails to the board all you want. The date that the government, the state government, it's not, it's not changing. Your kids will not be able to go to school. And there's nothing that this board will be able to do about it. So again, I support this. I want to thank Dr. Hurst for his leadership in, in pushing this and doing all the work that he did to get us to eighty-seven percent. I want to thank this board for its leadership in pushing and, and adopting this and pushing this and all the work it did for eighty. I want to thank all of the staff for all the work they did to push this and to get us to the eighty-seven percent. Because we have done our part and we led when other folks wouldn't because that's the kind of place we are. So I'm done. Thank you, President Christian, for giving me a moment to express myself or a couple of moments, quite a few moments. I appreciate that. But I am done.
All right, thank you. And uh, trustee Smith.
Thank you, President Christian. I, just a couple of comments. The board voted on a vaccine mandate and then twenty-four hours later, the government set a date and this board didn't align with that date. It was twenty-four hours. Twenty-five hours, the board said January the third, and then twenty-four hours later, the governor said July. If I'm not mistaken and I think I'm remembering correctly. Dr. Hurst, thank you for that acknowledgement. I'm remembering correctly. That's one thing. The second thing is the board did not, what was incapable of having the forethought when January third wasn't going to hit, February the eighteenth wasn't going to hit, and then we're hearing from staff tonight that they won't be able to hit July. So to your point, President, or to your point, trustee Phillips, I, I guess my, my issue is how much staff time is going to be used, Dr. Hurst, to come back every month to tell us updates of where you are when you just told us that you're not going to be able to hit July first? That's what you just said. Dr. Hurst said he does not have the capability in the, the capacity to hit July first because there's two thousand sixty-one students who will be impacted. We just heard from our C O that in July, we don't have the capability or the capacity to see what happens to those students. And I don't want to put words in people's mouth. That's what I heard. And if I'm wrong, please correct me at that time. So my question is, and kind of my question inside the comment is how much staff time will be used on bringing us back information and going into the care system, coming back out of the care system, figuring out where we are and how many people we have and where we can place them. Uh, Dr. Hurst, I'm of the understanding that we don't have room for the sixty-two that plan or the eighty-five that know but will and the four hundred and ten with one dose, nor do we have room for the one thousand four hundred and ninety-nine. That's what I heard you tell me. So for me, the same board that talks about every time about listening to the superintendent, what I'm hearing you say is that you do not have the capacity and there's a lot of staff time put into bringing back a monthly report to the board when the end result will still be the same. And we are at eighty-seven percent, according to Mr. Phillips, eighty-seven percent herd immunity. That's what, that's what I just listened to him say. So, Dr. Hurst, I guess my question is, again, how much staff time? And then my second question is, would you recommend that this be completely taken off the table? And we do put other mission critical work on the table? If I could have an answer to that, I would appreciate it, Dr. Hurst.
Yes. So I will say that the staff has had this conversation. And I did um, uh, allude to this, uh, I believe at the previous board meeting that yes, we do not have the capacity. So everything you said is absolutely accurate. And I think I shared as well very transparently that the focus really does need to be on student learning and teaching also. I think our community is asking for it. I think we heard that in our public comment as well and doing study sessions around student data and looking at strategies. So absolutely, uh, the reality is, uh, we don't have the capacity. And as I shared, uh, quite transparently, even in July, even if there's a few students, we'll still have a situation where we have a waitlist and we'll still have some students that we're trying to either place in Virtual Academy or what do we do with them if they don't want to go into Virtual Academy? So it is a capacity issue, yes.
Thank you, Dr. Hurst. And I think one of the things that this courageous board can continue to lead on is our safety mitigation strategies that we use. I think that one of the things that this courageous board can lead on is ensuring that we set resources and we set all that we set resources and we set people resources in place to where we value our teachers, our staff, and we keep them safe and their family safe through the mitigation strategies that we have had in place. And if we need to put more in place, that we have conversations about that. Again, eighty-seven percent, according to the numbers that we have. Those are all of my comments. Thank you very much for the presentation again.
All right, we got two trustees that will be, uh, with trustee, and then after that would be trustee Phillips.
Thank you, President Christian. Um, I want to also thank staff and thank our board and community. I know it's not an easy conversation. We've had it obviously a few times. I am going to be supporting the change to July tonight. I, um, I have heard from staff and at the same time, I do, I do believe we should continue to get reports on this. Um, this work is urgent. Uh, we have done quite a bit of work on this, which I'm very proud of that we have as well. Uh, but we should continue to push this uh just as urgently. Many of us have lost many folks. I believe that getting vaccinated, as one of my colleagues said tonight, is the biggest and, and strongest strategy to combat this sickness. I have, as you all know, lost many family members in the last year, just lost another member of my family three weeks ago. And, and it was because of COVID. And I believe that we have to continue to push to get every single individual vaccinated if we can. But I understand the constraints we have in our system. So anyways, I will be supporting the change, but I do want us as a system to continue to push to make sure that we can find every single student, talk to them, continue to, uh, to, uh, do outreach to our high schools. I appreciate it. Mr. Ryan Phillips, the strategies that you presented tonight, that we're going to continue to push in our schools. Um, and I will support Dr. Hurst's staff and anything that you guys need to continue to push in this direction. Um, thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, trustee Phillips and then at the trustee Phillips will be trustee.
Um, I'm going to ask some questions to, um, hopefully clarify some things and I'm going to ask the questions of, of Dr. Hurst. Is it correct that the state has its own mandate?
If the state, uh, as I just shared, has a mandate and with the current information that we know, as I shared, things change, it's set for July the first for uh the student seven through twelve category. So yes.
Okay, and do we have authority to take the state's mandate off of the table?
No, we cannot take the state's mandate off the table.
So whether we like it or not, there will be a mandate in W C C U S D. Is that correct?
Yes, we, we will have to follow the state's mandate.
That answers my first set of questions. Thank you. My second set of questions goes around what does it mean to have a state mandate? Okay? So what does the state's mandate, just in a brief summary, say, school districts or students have to do?
Students have to be uh between ages of seven to twelve. Currently, right now, with the information that we know, they have to be fully vaccinated by July the first.
If a student does not comply with the state mandate, can they legally come to one of our schools?
The students coming, can, can the students come to our schools if they don't comply?
If they do not comply with the state mandate, can the students still come to our school legally?
Well, I think absolutely we are obligated to. So that's what, uh, the attorneys have shared with us that if they don't, if we don't educate them, we'll be violating their constitutional rights.
I'm asking a very specific question. I'm not asking if they don't comply with our mandate. Let me ask you this way.
Go ahead.
Does the state mandate require kids to get vaccinated in order to come to school?
Yes.
So if a child does not get vaccinated under state law, that child will not be able to come to school, correct?
That is correct.
So after the state mandate kicks in, our capacity is no longer an issue because the kids legally cannot be here if they are not vaccinated. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So are we having a moot conversation about our capacity after the date the state mandate kicks in?
Yes.
Thank you. I hope that clarifies this discussion for everyone because we really can move on.
And then trustee Smith will, trustee.
So first I'd like to ask what the parliamentary and then the chair's preferred uh process is for me to get your attention to speak. Would you like to have me raise hand? Would you like me to unmute? Would you like me to throw something at you? What's the?
Excuse me, parliamentarian. I apologize. Could you speak to the mic? We can't hear you on this side.
Sorry about that.
Thank you.
Um, you're welcome to throw any candy at us. Other than that, anything that'll catch the attention. So if it, if you raise your hand or you make motion and it's close to you, we may not be able to see it. The chair and I look down the table. So you want to make sure you're out a little bit. So really putting your arm out or even holding your water bottle out, that should help.
Okay, thank you. So first I would like to thank everybody for the work on this. This was a humongous lift. I database to upload all the vaccine clinics, the millions of communications, every, I mean, thank you. And it's, it's really appreciated. Um, I do agree, this was e- extremely courageous and we did it because there was an absence of leadership, absolutely. And so I thank all my partners here on the board and I asked, I thank Dr. Hurst, who for the first fifty times I emailed him was like, I am not touching that. He finally came around. And I want to thank the community because I knew that the vaccination rate was not in the fifties. I knew it was quite high. And I hope you had fun with the care database. I'm sorry about that, but it's really important. I mean, it's eighty-seven percent. It's actually probably higher, um, because you were probably conservative. So it's eighty-seven percent. That is something to be unbelievably proud of. So thank you to everyone. It really is. Um, and that's, that's why we get vaccinated, to take, take care of each other. We get vaccinated to take care of each other and take care of our community. I also want to remind everybody that as of today, there were, there are about nine hundred and fifty thousand COVID nineteen deaths. The majority of them, as of late, are people who are not vaccinated. So please go get vaccinated. It protects yourself and it protects your community. I'm disappointed that we can't a hundred percent enforce this now, but the truth is we have no way of serving students. the truth is, we have no way of serving students and we will be in violation of ed code. So we can't. I'm sorry about that. I'm a little disappointed about it, but you know, it is what it is. And you know, it was a lofty goal and we came really close. And I'm proud of us. And you know, I'm going to support a July first date. So, so thank you really to everybody. And that's it.
President Christian, I would like to let you know that we were out of time for this item.
Thank you. We are now on our way to the vote. And we will start out with the student trustees. Trustee Leon.
Leon, yes.
Trustee Flores.
Flores, yes.
Trustee Rettler.
Rettler, yes.
Trustee Smith Foul.
I'm voting, I'm abstaining because it doesn't matter. Because if the governor says July first, then it's July first. But I do value staff's time and I'm abstaining from that for the my, my vote is an abstention. Thank you, President Christian.
All right. Oh, Trustee Phillips.
I've known you for a long time. You've been forgetting my name. That's the, the answer is yes, so well, yes.
All right. Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy.
Consular, so yes.
All right. And, and then I'm a yes on the, on the vote. And the motion passes. Okay. Now we go back to the site safety plan that was pulled, item D one. And that's was pulled by Trustee Rettler.
Point of order, President Christian. I don't have a time limit for this item. Would you like me to do fifteen minutes?
Yes.
Thank you.
So Trustee Rettler.
I'm sorry, I have a point of order. Don't these get moved to after G discussion items and reports?
No, they are addressed following section F. If you look at the business item consent items, the last item in that last sentence in the paragraph, items of board calls for discussion or explanation will be addressed following section F. We just finished section F. And so now we are at the pulled site safety plans.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I have a couple of questions on the site safety plans. The first one is do all plans meet California Department of Education guidelines?
Trustee Rettler. Can you repeat that? I'm sorry.
Do all safety plans meet California Department of Education guidelines?
Yes.
Have all school sites, site councils reviewed and approved school safety plans?
Yes.
It says in your presentation that boards receive updates in closed session. Does the board have to request that or does it automatically get scheduled?
Normally it is scheduled, but we have given you the information that is all the, it's a template from FEMA that the plans that we use that were presented to you and the information that was given to you. So although you do not have the, the actual plans, you have the template that is in place.
But a board member could request that those go
That is, that is correct.
Session.
Yes. And the reason why you do it in closed session is because of the tactical information.
Can you please explain the process by which school sites are walked, key people on school sites are walked through the plans, training, familiarized that oh, you can't hear. Can you briefly walk through the process of how school sites are trained on the specifics of the plan and the timing on that?
Yes, I can. So what we do is we, we give the plans to the principals at the beginning of the year. The principal has a responsibility of getting the information in those site safety plans. There is training that is given to those principals at the beginning of the year that I do for those principals. If they need additional training, I come to their sites and give them that information. Once they have the information, it is their responsibility to make sure that their school staff is aware of the plan and has the basic knowledge of the information that is in the plan.
Okay, thank you. That is all my questions.
All right, thank you. Any other question? Go ahead.
We had a discussion some time ago around school safety. And I remember asking specifically for certain things to come back. And I asked either online or offline or both for information to come back regarding school resource officers. And we have had multiple discussions about how they may or may not fit in to this matrix, particularly around sporting events. And that conversation has never come back. In addition to school resource officers, I know that I have asked offline and online as well about measures that we can take to prevent weapons from entering our campuses and specifically guns. But there are other weapons besides guns. So I just want to know when we're going to have the conversation about school resource officers and methods to prevent firearms from being on our campuses. I think that we have been very fortunate. I kind of want to use the word lucky. But luck only lasts for so long. And I am afraid that somebody eventually is going to be seriously injured or worse. So I know it's an uncomfortable conversation. I know some people don't want to hear it. But we have had instances of high-powered weapons on our campuses, instances of kids being robbed at gunpoint on campuses. And it's time for us to revisit the SRO discussion and measures that we can take to keep firearms off of our campuses. Because I know everybody wants to be PC, but PC does not keep kids safe. Those are my comments. Thank you very much.
Okay. Is there a motion to adopt the school site safety plans?
I will move to adopt the school site safety plans.
All right, do I have a second?
President Christian, I will second.
All right, it was moved by Trustee Rettler, second by Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy. And so we'll move on to the vote. Move on to the vote. Yeah, move right to the vote.
Yes.
Trustee Leon.
Leon, yes.
Trustee Flores.
Flores, yes.
Trustee
Rettler, yes.
Trustee Smith Foul.
To adopt the safety plan, Smith Foul, yes.
All right, Trustee Phillips.
Yes.
Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy.
Consular, so yes.
And I am a yes on accepting the safety plans. And a motion carried, so now we
President Christian, I have a point of order.
Go ahead.
It is almost nine thirty. We have two items left, G one, G two, and comments from the board, H. I would like to have an estimation of how long those would take. And I would also like to make sure that we are able to get comments from the board this evening, should I make a motion?
Trustee Smith Foul, each presentation is fifteen minutes.
Does that include questions from the board, sir? Or is that just presentations?
That's just presentation.
Do you have any estimate about questions from the board or you can't tell us? You wouldn't, you wouldn't have any idea?
Yeah, I wouldn't have any idea. You know, if you go based on five questions each for seven board members, that's, you know, roughly thirty, thirty-five minutes.
For each one, sir?
Yes.
Okay, so we have thirty, that's seventy minutes for approximately seventy minutes for question and answer and thirty minutes for G one and two. And then you have comments from the board. So you're looking at an extension of trustee, or trustee clerk Gonzalez-Hoy or President Christian, can you give me a time? You looking at an extension of what minimally, an hour and a half, two hours?
What were you saying? Yeah, about an hour and ten minutes.
An hour and ten minutes? Is it proper for me to make a motion to extend the, to extend the board meeting for an hour and let's just say twenty minutes to ensure that we get G one, two, and H in? Is it proper to make that motion?
Thank you, President Christian. Just to clarify, it's, it's an hour and ten minutes from now. So we don't have to extend the meeting for an hour and ten minutes. It would be extending an hour and ten minutes from now. So it'd be a, excuse me, ten forty-five. But maybe a recommendation for you, Trustee Smith Foul, would be just to extend until we're done with the items.
I think that would be a great motion. Is this now the proper time to make that motion, President Christian or Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy? Would this be the time?
Yes.
I motion that we, we continue this meeting until G one, two, and H are complete. I would urge one of my colleagues to second.
All right, it's been moved and by Trustee Smith Foul.
My second motion.
All right, it's been second.
Like to put a second motion on the floor to extend the meeting until ten thirty.
So you are saying that ten thirty for these items. However, ten thirty
That's
Until we're done with G one and G two.
So that
Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy, there was feedback. We could not hear, we couldn't hear your feedback.
You were removing H. So you're moving to amend the first move, motion by striking H.
Did you hear that, Trustee, Trustee Smith Foul?
Your motion was to extend the meeting until we get through with G one and two and not H I, not H or I, correct?
Yeah, not H. I would be announced by the board president.
Is that a friendly amendment or is that an additional motion?
I'll, I'll see if you'll take it a friendly amendment.
Thank you for asking if I will take that as a friendly amendment. I believe it's imperative that the board have an opportunity to speak to the community. So comments from the Board of Education and future agenda items, which is incredibly important, I think need to be vocalized and memorialized on video. So I'm sorry, but I will not accept the friendly amendment. I believe that H is imperative.
Thank you. I did not get a second, so it does.
President Christian, I do have a question, if I may.
And go ahead.
My question is, is there a time constraint around G one or G two, Dr. Hurst? Do they have to be presented tonight?
Yes, and we asked for G two first because of our guests.
So G two has to be presented tonight and you wanted to go first. G one has to be presented tonight. Both of those have to be done tonight.
Yes.
Thank you.
Let's do this in order. Do we strike H from extending the meeting?
All right. So take it to the vote. Um, agenda item H to strike it from, from, from the meeting and that we accomplish the other items.
President Christian, I have a point of order. Was that, I, I did not agree to that friendly amendment. So does that have to have a second?
No.
If not, it dies. It's a friendly amendment. Madam Parliamentarian, clerk, trustee Gonzalez-Hoy said that's a friendly amendment to my motion. I have to agree to that or he has to have a second. Is that not accurate?
Oh. The trustee made the motion first. Then he asked if you had accepted as a friendly amendment. You refused. He had already made the motion. We had begun discussion with it as a friendly amendment. The chair does not have to demand or require a second. So the very first thing that we are going to vote on is do we strike item H from the motion to extend the meeting until G one, two, and H are heard?
President Christian, can you repeat the motion, please?
Yes, we're going to move the agenda to, we're going to strike H. And we're going to move to finish up G one and G two. Okay, so we move on to the vote. Okay, so we move on to the vote. Trustee Leon.
First to clarify, this is the vote to strike item H. All right, then I'll vote no, Leon, no.
All right, trustee Flores.
Flores, no.
Flores, no. Reckler, no.
Smith Folds, no. We need to hear from the board.
Mr. Phillips votes no.
Gonzalez-Hoy, yeah.
And I'm. Oh, I'm here. And the vote fails.
So now, according to Rosenberg, we're going to work our way backwards. And the next motion that we're going to vote on is motion to hear items until ten thirty.
All right, start off with, with the vote, trustee Luwaw.
Leon, no, considering we just spent about fifteen minutes on that.
Flores, no. Reckler, yes.
Smith Folds, no.
Mr. Phillips votes yes.
Gonzalez-Hoy, no.
And, and it's on me. And I vote yes. All right, passes the meeting within at ten thirty.
Mr. President, considering everything, we would like to recommend that we present G2 first and then come back to G1.
Okay, and we will go to G2 and then we'll go to G1.
President Christian, point of order.
Yes.
Would you like me to edit our times to reduce?
Yes.
The times, since we only have an hour, ten-minute presentations from staff, and then ten minutes questions?
Yeah.
And comments. Okay. Thank you.
Great. Port President, board members, Dr. Hurst, staff, it's a pleasure to be here tonight. We're joined here by Blake Bohm from KNN. The purpose of G2 tonight is to update you on the bonds and the bond program. This is part of the annual compliance and direction by the board where annually we come back and review the progress of our existing outstanding bonds. And we see if there's an opportunity to look at those outstanding bonds for potential refunding or refinancing. So that we might save the taxpayers who have already committed to our bond program that, with bonds that were already issued. And we might be able to save them some money on their property tax bill. And so with that, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Blake Bohm from KNN.
Thank you, Mr. McIntyre. Good evening, members of the board and community. It's a pleasure to be here. I have a brief presentation to recap some of the 2021 financing highlights that were accomplished last year. And also looking forward, looking at, as discussed in the introduction, refinancing opportunities to lower property taxes on existing outstanding bonds. First slide, please. Some of the 2021 financing highlights included, first, a refinancing that was done in a, in the low interest rate environment. Executed back in June of 2021, where nearly a hundred and fifty million dollars of refunding bonds were issued. Those refunding bonds will be issued at rates that were available in the market, which, based on evaluation, generated considerable taxpayer savings. The way that that happens is the refunding bonds are sold and will pay off bonds that were issued previously in a variety of different years from older measures. In, at lower interest rates. Based on the interest rate savings, taxpayers will then pay a lower property tax over the remaining repayment period. I'll go into more of the specifics on that refunding in subsequent slides. Additionally, in 2021, the district sold its first series of Measure R bonds at a par amount of seventy-five million to address the first phase of capital facility projects approved by voters in March of 2020. Next slide. Within these annual bond reports, I always like to share with the board and community just an overview of all of the district's bond measures, which you can see here on this slide. Voters have approved seven different general obligation bond measures going back to nineteen ninety-eight. Of which, there is really two measures that have existing authorization, which includes the 2005 Measure J and 2020 Measure R. Based on the tax rate commitments that the district made to voters at the time the measures were approved. We do anticipate that 2020 Measure R will be the only bond measure that will be issuing bonds in the near term. With 2005 Measure J waiting until further assessed valuation growth will allow for tax rate capacity to issue the remaining roughly seventy-seven point five nine million dollars of authorization that remains. Next slide, please. So I'm going to go into more depth on the 2021 Measure R issuance. That was the Series A bonds that were sold. With the first slide being an overview, I'm sorry, with the first slide being a historical look at assessed valuation. Assessed valuation is a critical part of general obligation bonds as it's an ad valorem tax. The, the ad valorem nature looks at where assessed values are at a given point in time in relation to the tax rate that voters approved. And so we look at this very closely each time we go out to market. Now, you can see here that year over year, there's varying differences, but the district over the course of time has had fairly strong AV growth due to development activity and market demand in the area, with the long-term twenty-year growth rate at nearly four and a half percent. The table to the right at the very bottom shows the most recent assessed valuation growth year, which does look a bit irregular relative to the long-term growth rate. That two-point-three-six percent growth rate, while still representing growth, is lower than that historical trend that's largely contributed to the pandemic. And this is something that we're seeing statewide and nationwide. Moving on to the next slide. This slide looks at the capacity that remains for Measure R based on the tax rate that voters approved. While seventy-five million dollars was sold, there's still five hundred million remaining, which we'll plan to issue in subsequent years as capital projects are targeted to be, to move forward. Next slide. I think I just covered this slide. Okay, move forward again, please. Next slide. As part of ed code, we report back to the board and community on the final cost of issuance after each sale. This table reflects all of the costs associated with the Measure R issuance. Next slide, please. Here we show the collective of, for all measures, projected tax rates over the remaining repayment period. On this slide, it shows some of the older measures as they're fault, anticipated to fall off in the upcoming years, and then, of course, all the way up to the most recent measures. The combined tax rate represented on this slide is less than what the combined tax rate that voters have approved. And you can see that in the far right-hand column, and it's projected to be less than what voters have approved over the repayment period. Moving on to a closer look at the 2021 refinancing that was achieved. First, starting off with a brief overview of the district's refunding and restructuring policy. Due to time constraints, I won't go into depth on each point here, but really what this policy was intended to establish back in 2013, when it was approved by the district. To establish guidelines for evaluating potential refunding candidates, focusing on minimum savings thresholds, and to ensure that there's an appropriate decision-making path as refunding opportunities are being considered. Next slide. So with that policy in mind, back in 2021, in a extremely low interest rate environment at that time, the district was able to refinance over a hundred and thirty-four million dollars of outstanding bonds, generating taxpayer savings over thirty-three million over the remaining repayment period. In the financial industry, we oftentimes look at what those dollars equate to in present value terms, as we, as, as we're doing here. And those present value savings equate to twenty-three point three million. The 2021 refinancing was the most impactful refunding that the district has successfully secured to date, based on total, total dollar amount saved. It reduced interest rates that averaged approximately five-point-one-six percent and reduced them down to two-point-six-six percent. Very successful. On the next slide, we summarize all of the district's refinancing efforts to date, which includes nine different refundings, which have saved taxpayers collectively over a hundred and eighteen million dollars in interest savings. I'll make note here, just for the sake of discussion, that it's not a requirement for this district to refinance outstanding debt. It's a proactive step that the board and stakeholders have taken to ensure that they're following through with their fiduciary responsibility to taxpayers for all of the general obligation bonds that have been approved. Next slide. And to wrap up the recap of 2021, again, per ed code, reporting back on the final cost of issuance associated with the 2021 refunding. The last few slides will focus on a look forward based on the current interest rate environment and potential refunding opportunities or candidates in compliance with the policy. And the next slide. Based on current market conditions, we continue to be in a relatively low interest rate environment, albeit rates are on the rise. Rates in the first couple months of the year have already increased by more than fifty basis points or point five percent in long-term rates. Even though that trend has happened and is expected to continue throughout the course of the year. There continues to be an opportunity for the district to refinance outstanding bonds and save taxpayers, further taxpayer dollars. On the next slide. We summarize what the current refinancing candidates are that meet the policy guidelines. It encompasses four different series of outstanding bonds. For a total par amount of almost one hundred million dollars. This refunding would be able to generate, is estimated to generate approximately ten-point-four million dollars of savings that would be added. Or, on aggregate, nine-point-two percent present value savings relative to the amount of bonds refunded, all of which meet the policy guidelines. And further the effort that the district has made over the years to reduce interest cost for taxpayers. On the last slide of my presentation, it looks at a tentative timeline, although there are some adjustments here. We would, should the board be interested in, in having us continue to look at and proceed with a refunding in 2022? We would bring authorization documents back to the board in April. Here on this slide, it says March. I want to make a correction to that timeline. It would be in April. And that would be an action item for the board's consideration at that time. Should the board approve a refunding at that April meeting, we would then proceed with going to market in mid-April, locking in interest rates at that time. The locking, locking in of interest rates would coincide with the amount of dollars saved. And then we would plan to close by early May, and there would be a post-refinancing presentation made to the board, reporting back on the actual dollars that were saved to taxpayers. That concludes my presentation this evening. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay, before we go to the questions, we got to, we got to push. You can ask long questions, so. I'm just, I'm just saying, so we'll, we go ahead for clarified questions. Go ahead. Comments?
Thank you. I have three clarifying questions. You'll have to answer briefly. If you can't answer them, if you could email them back to me. You have like thirty seconds per. So the first one is on negotiated versus competitive sale process. And on slide twenty-nine, you have a rubric. Did you follow that for the 2021 issu, issuances? What, what drove your decisions on that? And does it anticipate negotiated sale for the potential 2022 refundings?
We always consider both methods of sale for each issuance prior to. The decision to go negotiated back in 2021 for those financings was driven off of certain credit volatilities that the rating agencies had expressed, and the expectation that investors would also express. Through a negotiated sale, our selection of certain bond underwriters was made beforehand, and we're able to have a longer runway to pre-market the bonds and ensure success when going to market, whereas for the competitive sale, there would have been, it was expected that there would be more questions that were asked that could perhaps influence the success of the 2021 issuance. I would expect for 2022, if proceeding with a refunding, that we would also sell negotiated, just due to some of the questions around the pandemic. Student enrollment and ADA, the, the impact it has on the district's budget, and so on and so forth. So I would anticipate the 2022 issuance would be done via negotiated sale as well.
All right, the second question is the structuring of Measure R issuances. So on slides six and seven, it appears that the 2021 Series A issuance was structured in a way to almost fully utilize the available tax rate capacity in 2022 and 2023. It appears that the plan is for Series B and C issuances to have a similar front-loaded structure. Twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-four combined tax rates are projected at over two ninety per hundred thousand of assessed value. And that's a twenty percent increase from the average of two forty. It's actually the highest it's ever been. So the district has always had a goal of maintaining a stable rate. Can you talk about why you're doing that and what the benefits are, if there are any?
Absolutely, and keen observations. With the approval of Measure R back in March of 2020, that coincided with an increase on the overall tax burden for the district. It, it had no change to what the tax rates would be on the prior measures, but it, it had a, it added a new tax for Measure R, what voters approved at an additional sixty dollars per hundred thousand of assessed value. So when structuring the Series R bonds, starting with Series A, we're tapping into the full taxing capacity that voters approved back in March of 2020. The reason that we do that is because paying off any bonds that we can from ad valorem taxes that voters have approved is going to be the most cost-effective way to retire those bonds as early as possible. And secure the lowest cost of borrowing. So what you've observed, and again, keen observation for the Series A, while there's no other Measure R bonds outstanding, we are tapping into the full sixty-dollar or close to the full sixty-dollar amount that tax, that voters approved back in March of 2020. The Series B would be structured the same way, again, for cost-effectiveness and to pay these bonds off as early as possible.
Okay, finally, coming back, I think you already answered this, but that, just one more time. So we're on February ninth. You've done your, your evaluation as of February ninth. You know, it's a little shaky right now. What, say again, what is your process? What, say again, what is your process or your timing to update your analysis prior to board action in mid-April?
We're, we're monitoring the current refunding candidates on really a daily basis at this point because there is so much volatility in the market. Our plan would be to bring back a resolution which would designate a not to exceed amount for the two thousand and twenty two refunding. That not to exceed amount that's presented to the board in April would be representative of what we believe the refunding would look like based on current market rates. And at the, based on the current analysis, that not to exceed amount would be representative of approximately one hundred million dollars, which would be used to refinance outstanding bonds. That's based on current market today and could change before it's presented to the board in April.
Okay, thank you. I'd love to talk more, but we don't have any time. So thank you.
Of course, my pleasure.
President Christian, we just ran out of time for this item. Thank you.
Can I have a question, a question? Because what I heard him say is if the board wants to do something. So I'm not clear if staff was actually asking for direction from the board at the time about refunding. But I just, I need to, I need to, I'm gonna say this. So I don't know if this is for Dr. Hurst or who it is to address this, but if they were asking for direction, then that needs to be addressed. So, Dr. Hurst.
What, what was your question, sir?
I heard Blake talk about refunding. And if the board wants to do X, that he will bring something back, which gave me the impression that staff was asking for direction. And if you are asking for direction, I'm just putting that out there.
We, we are definitely looking to see if, ensure there's an interest by the board to continue to move forward in the process.
So, so let me say this is gonna take ten seconds. So while I understand putting a time limit, having a time limit that only allows one trustee to talk and then for the staff not to get the direction that they need is not good business.
Trustee Christian, the time limits are set because we are ending the meeting at ten thirty and we have one more item. So that is the reason. This my suggestion is that maybe we go quickly through each board member on the direction and then we can move to the last item.
Mr. President, this is actually listed only as a discussion item, not an action item. So in the ground act, we did not warn the public that we would take an action, including a recommendation. So we, we couldn't make a recommendation at this time. We can do it at the next meeting, absolutely. As we would just need to put it on the agenda as an action item.
Okay, so we will come back to this item, revisit this item on the next agenda. And now we'll move to the G one. The bun, I mean, not the bun, but the budget.
Wonderful. Thank you. It, it's a pleasure to be with you tonight, Board President, Board Members, Dr. Hurst and, and community. Tonight, we're gonna just basically take the next steps. This is an interim step between the first interim and the second interim report, kind of reminding us where we are in the process with our budget process and where we stand financially. Next slide, please. As part of this process, we're gonna review some of the information shared with, by the governor and with the January budget proposal. We're gonna talk about where we are with district budget information and its development for next year. We're gonna look at some of those enrollment trends and staffing projections moving forward. And we're also gonna hear from the County Office of Education Chief Business Officer around slide fifteen of this presentation because we want to make sure that the board is fully informed from a governance perspective regarding the budget development process and, and its responsibilities. Next slide, please. So a, as you might recall, the first interim report was, had a negative budget certification. There are three budget certification for any interim budget report. First interim had that negative budget certification and the relevance of that is that we were, when we looked at the current year plus the two subsequent years, we could not mathematically project that we'd be able to meet all of our expenses and obligations for that entire period of time. In fact, we could not demonstrate we could meet them next year. And that's why we were below qualified. We're actually negative. The goal, of course, is to move up and find ourselves either qualified or ideally with a positive budget certification for second interim report. And that's what staff is working on now. But some of the inputs that, that are required, that are part of the development of that budget, uh, will be coming to the board next week. Next slide, please. Great. So we're gonna go ahead and talk about some of the information that was shared by the governor in January. One of the really nice pieces of information from a budget perspective that we learned in the governor's budget presentation is that the COLA is anticipated to be higher than originally expected. When we looked last May, when we talked about COLA last May, the expected COLA for, for this next fiscal year was only two point four eight percent. But because inflation has been so high, the governor is projecting COLA at five point three three percent. And subsequent to this, even the L A O is projecting that COLA will be even higher in the sixes. This is a double edged sword. We're getting more money because our costs are going up this fast. It's not free new money. It's to recognize the costs of operations are increasing this quickly. But we're seeing also similar with the out years, the twenty three, twenty four COLAs going up from three point one one percent. I'm being asked to start my video. Oh, I see. Okay. The COLA is going from three point one one percent up to three point six one percent. And in the out years, it's going up a tenth of a percent. So what does that mean for us? It means our local control funding formula revenue is going to increase next year by three point, or seven point four percent, seven point four million dollars. And when we look in the out years, we see it's, it's increasing by eight point three million for twenty two, twenty three and for twenty four, twenty five, eight million. And you say, why would that be going down from year two to year three on the multi-year projection? It's because our student population is declining in the projections. Next slide, please. Looking at some of the other major inputs in our budget development, we have to recognize that as we've been dealing with for the past five years now, the cost of our, our pension systems for our valued labor partners is going up. And so here the Cal PERS rate for any of our classified employees and classified management is going from twenty two point nine one percent in the current year of every salary dollar. It's projected to go up to twenty six point one percent. Now, there is, that's a three point nine one, three point one nine percent increase or roughly two point six million dollar increase from this year to next year, just on that one line item. Now, interestingly, there is a, a actuarial evaluation report going to the Cal PERS board in April. And this rate might be pushed down to twenty five point four. So instead of increasing from twenty two point nine one up to twenty six one, we're hoping the increase will actually be slightly less to twenty five point four. But for now, we have to use the published number of twenty six point one. Next slide, please. Similarly, with the Cal STIRS rate, it's going up from the current sixteen point nine two. The rate is actually nineteen point one, but because the state was subsidizing the rate in the current year, our effective rate was sixteen point nine two. And that subsidy is done at the end of this year. And so we go back to the nineteen point one percent. That is, of course, a two point one eight percent increase and will cost the district three point six million dollars ongoing. So every year. And so when you think just about STIRS and PERS over the multi-year projection, that's five million dollars a year of increased expenses forever. So these really add up when we look over the multi-year expenditure period. Next slide, please. Great. So wanted to bring us back to where we were with some of these new inputs. We've plugged in the COLA. We took the first interim numbers where we were. We plugged in the new COLA, those seven and eight million dollar increased revenue numbers we talked about. We also plugged in the changes to STIRS and PERS as they're known. Uh, and so what we, what we have over the multi-year projection period is, is an update to the M Y P from first interim. And so here we see that essentially, uh, looking in twenty one, twenty two, that wrote E, we see the ending fund balance of thirty four million dollars. Uh, and, and, and that's, that's good news. We want to make sure we're preserving that fund balance. To get there, we're spending down about twenty five million dollars of our fund balance, though, in the current year. Moving over into next year, though, we see where that our structural deficit is really where it really is. We're really at about forty five million dollars on our structural deficit. And because of that, we're only carrying over thirty four million dollars at the end of this year. So when we subtract that forty four million next year, we see we're upside down. That means that the district would have no choice but to make up the, the difference with cash and fund seventeen, which is the solvency reserve account. And that is the account that the board has set aside specifically for that purpose, that we have resolution saying we're not gonna touch. So that the big, big no-no. And that's why we're, we're having a lot of the conversations around this sort of adjustments that we're looking at for next year that will be included in the second interim report. Of course, carrying the, the figures out to twenty three, twenty four, a similar structural deficit of forty four million dollars, bringing that fund balance upside or upside down by fifty four million dollars. That would far exceed the amount we have in fund seventeen by about twenty million dollars. And so at that, you know, really early in twenty three, twenty four, according to this model, we would be out of cash. Uh, and, and cash is king. We can, we can have a bad budget year, but what we can't do is run out of cash because we wouldn't be able to make payroll or payer accounts payable. In fact, the second interim, I will provide you the exact date that we're projected to run out of cash based on all the known inputs. Because I think that's something that you should always be aware of whenever we don't have a positive budget certification. Next slide, please. So a couple of things we want to talk about include the enrollment trends because these are massively impacting our financial position. Next slide. But we're not alone. Declining enrollment throughout the state has been horrendous. Here you see the top ten counties that are projected to lose enrollment between twenty one, twenty two and thirty, thirty one. So you see, of course, Los Angeles, Ventura, Noma Counties, Santa Clara Counties, massive losses. But even when you look at the state of California on the far right, the average county in the state of California is gonna lose eight point seven percent of its students over that ten year period. Twenty twenty one, twenty two to thirty, twenty thirty, thirty one. So we know that declining enrollment is a problem. It's a problem to varying degrees around the state and it's a big problem in West Contra Costa. We are definitely driving our county in, in, in that regard. Next slide, please. So one of the things we have to do is look at our cohort survival rates. Where are the students and, and what does it look like? So here you see the enrollments by grade, by year from twenty fourteen, fifteen down to twenty one, twenty twenty one, twenty two. Uh, and, and we're using the census day data for the current enrollment year. And on the right, you have the enrollment totals when you add up each of the grade spans. Next slide, please. So one of the things we like to do is actually look at what our cohort survival rates are over time. And so here, if you look at grade one in fourteen, fifteen in the green and follow it down each year, you know, you'd assume that if there were ten students in, in grade one in, in fourteen, fifteen and fifteen, sixteen, there would be same ten students would roll forward in a perfect world, but we do have migration that we have to deal with. And so in this case, the, the grade one fourteen, fifteen cohort, by the time they got to grade six, we only had eighty five point one five percent of those students still in the system. Looking down the next year, the fif- fifteen, sixteen grade one cohort, by the time they got to grade six, we had eighty eight point nine and just under eighty four percent for the sixteen, seventeen grade one cohort. So not great cohort survival rates in general. And this is part of why we're seeing this massive decline. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Next, there we go. And, and there's just, there's a graphical representation of, of not only, well, now we're actually in this, we're looking at ADA projections. So in the prior size, we were looking enrollment, but ADA is how we're funded. And as you might recall, because of COVID, the state froze our ADA number in, on February twenty eighth of nineteen, uh, February twenty eighth of twenty twenty for the nineteen twenty school year. And so we were able to use that ADA number for nineteen twenty and twenty twenty one. But we, we're coming up to this cliff now in ADA that we're gonna have to start to deal with. Because now we're taking it, we have real attendance and we're able to use those numbers moving forward. We weren't in this kind of mixed position like we were last year. And so looking forward, we're, we're showing that the expected funded ADA levels are going down at the same rate that we're expecting enrollment to go down. It's, in fact, slightly higher because we don't expect to sustain in a in a COVID environment, uh, the same ninety six to ninety seven percent ADA rate, ADA to enrollment or attendance to enrollment that we've seen historically. Next slide, please. So next, we're gonna talk about staffing information. So as, as we looked over that period of time, we saw that we had lost students. And in fact, from sixteen seventeen, fifteen, sixteen to twenty twenty one, we lost eight point four percent of our students. And so here, what you see in this chart, in the green, you see certificated staffing. In the orange, you see classified staffing. And in the gray, at the bottom there, you see the management staffing. And you see the staffing number of F T Es for each group over time. And of course, as our student population dwindles, you would expect staffing to mirror that. You know, we're, we're a group of adults developing young minds and, and bodies. And, and, you know, we would expect to see some sort of alignment with the number of, of adults matching to the students. But that hasn't necessarily been the case up, up until this year. We, we've seen, for the most part, on average, especially with certificated management, the numbers haven't really dropped a whole lot to match that eight point four percent decline in students. And so if we just, if we just projected that decline forward, I, we, we see here in the twenty two, twenty three, what we would expect it to be if we're matching student populations, holding organizational structure, what it was at fifteen, sixteen, which was the last time the district had a balanced budget. Uh, and so that, that was why that date and time was picked, chosen just for a picture and time, a snapshot comparison. I'm not saying we should staff the district exactly the same as it was back then. We live in a different world today. But a model to show why, why our staffing is higher than it might otherwise need to be. Uh, and so with that, I would like to stop and take a moment and, and invite Denise Porterfield, the County, Contra Costa County Office of Education Chief Business Official, uh, to share the county's perspective on, on where we are, what, you know, looking, coming into second interim off of first interim and with the finances I just reviewed with you. Denise?
So, uh, good evening, board members, Superintendent Hurst and staff. And I want to thank you for this opportunity to speak with you this evening. As a deputy superintendent of business in the Contra Costa County Office of Education, one of my most significant responsibilities is representing Superintendent Lynn Mackey in providing fiscal oversight and guidance under Assembly Bill twelve hundred, Assembly Bill twenty seven fifty six and Assembly Bill eighteen forty. These bills detail the responsibility and the authority of the county office and of the fiscal crisis and management assistant team for general oversight and more specifically for districts that are financially certified, qualified, negative, and will speak at the end of, of this, of lack of going concern. So I am going to be speaking toward the certification. When you have a, a financial statement such as this, there are certifications as Mr. McIntyre reviewed. And as you know, West Contra Costa is certified as negative going into the second interim. And so when we have a district that is qualified or negative, the county superintendent schools has to exercise some authority, which is granted under ed code four two one two seven point six and four two one three one B. So when the, uh, the district is certified as negative, the county superintendent has to, is required to take all necessary actions under these ed codes to ensure that the district meets its fiscal obligations. So keep in mind, it is the school district's board and that's the authority that rests with you right now to maintain fiscal solvency of your school district. However, it is the county office's responsibility to provide the oversight and increasing sanctions to the district to ensure action is taken to move towards solvency or toward that positive certification which identifies that. I do want to applaud the district for taking some of these steps that are outlined in that code on your own. You had, the district has two reports to inform you as to what may need to be done with your district to reset solvency, one from FICMAN and one from Illuminated Collective. And your staff has been present tonight, as we continue to engage with them, are doing all the work to review the items in the budgets provide you with accurate information so that you can make the necessary decisions. So in the ed codes that I've identified and in a letter stated February ninth from the county office, there are seven actions that the county office may take. And we did, um, direct the district to take some of those actions in your first interim letter. And that was to encumber all the contracts and other obligations to prepare cash flow analysis and to do monthly importantly budget revision. And then to also make sure that all receivable and payables are recorded in the district's financial system. The district is also required to submit a plan by second interim on how they plan to, how you plan to achieve fiscal solvency. And this work is being done for you right now in this presentation. Um, the board is receiving the information so that you can make decisions and on how you want to move forward. However, I did specify there's one more certification should the district not be able to achieve fiscal solvency. And it's not a true certification, but it is an ed code and it's called lack of going concern. And so a going concern means that the district is financially healthy and able to meet its financial obligations. And when it's not able to do that and not making strides toward that, it's a lack of going concern. If at any time during the year, the county superintendent determines that the school district is going down that pathway, there's a lot more sanctions that would be put into place. And it's not a place that the county office wants to be. Um, we would prefer working closely with you, uh, making the adjustments and getting back to, uh, positive certification. If you were to go into lack of going concern, there's the, the sanctions also includes same or send. And so some of the decision-making goes out the door about education and it does just become a financial discussion. And that's one that I would recommend that you not go down, only because it does have a significant impact on, on your student population, your staff and everybody involved. You are financially challenged. You are, have a lot of fronts, uh, up against you as you've just been presented. Deficit spending, declining enrollment and increasing costs for goods and services. It's impacting a lot of districts, um, but starting from a negative standpoint, it's a little harder on you. So the sooner that you can have these discussions, make any of the adjustments that you need to become fiscally solvent, yeah, it would be better for the district and then that way you can get back to the education of your students and not talking about money. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Porterfield. Uh, if we can move to the next slide, please. Next slide, please. So really that, that your team, your executive team has been working hard and, and, and following the advice we heard in prior, after prior board meetings where we talked about budget. We've been really focusing on where we can cut those expenditures and the supplies and materials and the contracts uh, and consulting expenses. You know, one of, one of our kind of forward-looking goals is of course to hire in the positions that we can, those hard-to-hire positions, those speech and language pathologists and stop contracting out. Sometimes we feel like we're looking for a unicorn because they're very, very hard to find. But in, you know, the long-term goal is to continue to pursue those best practices. Uh, and that was the first round that, that the executive team pursued. And then the second round was taking those collective bargaining agreements and those staffing sheets at the sites and within the departments and, and working through and sticking to them, holding true to them, holding true to the commitments that were made, making sure that we're not, that we're staffing to those agreements, but we're not staffing grossly over. And I say that recognizing that ob- obviously every time we can put a qualified adult in front of a student, that's a good thing. But we have to do it within limits and fairly inequitably in a way that honors the, all the agreements, uh, made as well. And so for when we're planning for next year, we're really looking to stay as close to those agreements as we can. We're looking to move any staffing and excess over those need to be within very defined programs that are approved by the board, like in the local control and accountability plan or in, or in an updated and revised SR three spending plan, which we would have to bring back to you as well, uh, in order to make all of this work. And so with that, there's still going to be a little pain. Uh, th- as, as you know, next week, we're, we're going to be talking about a reduction force because we can get part of the way there. You know, in reality, we should be making a forty-five million dollar cut um, in order to balance the budget. And according to a resolution that was passed back in twenty-twenty, we can't do that in one go. Uh, but we do have potentially some sunshine on the horizon. One of the proposals by the governor included a three-year average ADA proposal, but it's not in law, so we can't include it in our projections. So what we're proposing with the reduction in force is to use some rather drastic plug measures in the second interim report. What does that mean? It means that we're, we're, we're planning to have a discussion with you around the re- reallocation of some, of the remaining SR three dollars uh, within the allowable uses, but really for more sustaining and maintenance of, of programs and staffing rather than additional programs and also, uh, using the, uh, the OPEB trust funds in the short term in the hopes that in addition to the RIF, which is about a quarter of the size that I would have recommended, uh, that's going to be brought forward next week, reduction force. Uh, in the hopes that if the state does implement one of the three increased funding ADA programs, the step-down programs that are, that are being proposed, uh, that those would actually close the gap of those two short-term funding measures. They would actually backfill them and we would unfurl. So we would, we would take, we would stop the idea of using OPEB if, if that, uh, state measure came into place for the three-year average trended ADA. So we would not spend the OPEB funds if that took place. And we would also, um, come back with a revised SR three plan in order to, uh, make sure that we're providing extra uh, learning loss recovery rather than just filling the gap in the short term. So these are some of the big rocks, uh, that would need to come in place to make, to bring second interim not to positive but to qualified. That concludes my presentation.
I'm going to say this, we don't have that much time, so the questions cannot be long. So they, they gotta be right to the point. Okay, go ahead.
My first comment is that I believe personally that we should balance the budget and that we should stop kicking the can and that we kicked the can for years and we're about to kick the can right off the cliff. I believe we should balance the budget. That's my first comment. My second comment is this. I heard you say that we are only doing a quarter of what you actually recommended. My understanding about your background is that you are the person or one of the people that CSBA would bring in to talk about finances, the FICMAT people that this is like your thing. And that you are recommending and that what we are doing is only twenty-five percent of what you are recommending. Uh, I think personally, we need to do what Mr. McIntyre says. And if he recommends whatever the other seventy-five percent is, um, we need to do it. And I know that that is, uh, tough medicine, but this district, and I've been saying this, we're going to go bankrupt because we are afraid and we use all kinds of excuses as to why not to do it. We, we use children and we, all kinds of excuses. But at the end of the day, we can't serve kids if we are bankrupt. So those are my comments. Balance the budget, please, and stop kicking the can and we need to listen to this man's expertise.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, I do have a couple of questions. What I will say, um, is that I disagree with my colleague. I think that we gotta go with your current recommendation of a fourth. Uh, doing a full, I mean, those are just words of someone who doesn't understand the impacts it can have on a school. I just don't understand how any of us could say that. Um, my first question, Mr. McIntyre. Will next week, we're apart from the ribs, will we get more information on the other areas that we're cutting such as contracts? Uh, other areas in the contract on the, excuse me, on the, uh, budget that have to do outside of staffing?
I can certainly provide some summary information that's already being prepared for the second interim report. We're, we're in a kind of a unique situation where we have to prepare two separate second interim reports because I don't know how you'll vote. Uh, so, so certainly we can, we can provide some supplemental data.
Thank you. Um, are we doing a spending freeze or non, or on non-urgent things such as travel? Just to give an example, are we doing that right now?
So, so we've, things that haven't already been approved or encumbered, we've, we've done a bit of a frost. Uh, so a lot of, there's been a lot of, hey, I'd like to do this or this is coming up and it's no, hold on. Let's, let's talk to the board, let's, let's get things balanced out. Uh, but for next, and that's for this year. Moving forward, yes, a hundred percent, that's been, that's all being stripped out from, from the future year budgets. Now, keep in mind where we can do local training. We, we, when, whenever you reduce staff, local training becomes all that much more important because you're, you need to get more out of the people that remain. And, and so, you know, we want to make sure that we're, we're providing equitable, you know, not equitable, reasonably priced local staff development. So we can make sure the people who are here pulling the, pulling the whole system forward for the benefit of students can do so productively within, with the capacity that we've given them. Uh, otherwise we have to start modifying duties and lessening service outputs. Uh, so it is certainly a balancing act.
Okay, when will we know if we can use the three-year, um, calculation on the budget? Will that be until we pass the budget in the state in May?
Well, I'll tell you, if I had my way, it would have been signed as emergency, emergency legislation. So I could have included it in second interim report and then we would have been having a very different conversation. We would still be talking about the same size rift, by the way. Uh, but it, it would be under, you know, we'd be talking about getting the rift for a positive budget certification instead of a qualified, a deeply qualified one. The way the law is written, the legislature has to put forth to the budget, uh, the, the, you know, the plan, uh, to, to the governor, I believe by June fifteenth, and he has to sign it by the twenty-seventh. So we won't know till the governor signs it because he has line item veto authority. So around the end of June.
Okay, thank you. I'll email you the rest of my questions on yield so that my colleagues can ask questions.
Okay, uh, trustee Smith, Paul.
Thank you, Mr. McIntyre. I'm going to ask them, but I don't want you to answer them. I just want you to hear them and then we can get the information back to me. Um, what really has changed since the last budget was adopted in June? From looking at it, it seems like the only thing that has actually changed is that the state is increasing funding from what was expected. Why, we have so many unfilled positions where, and we know that there would be turnover. What is the justification for layoffs? When enrollment is projected to be about the same, why are they allocating fewer FTEs at almost all school sites? How does the percent of our budget spent on teacher, on teacher salaries compare with the surrounding districts? My colleague hit on the one about contracts, consultants, et cetera. I want to make sure that I highlight that. I would also want to know how much is in the savings. Do we have, uh, we were told by, I don't see her name anymore. Oh, there it is, Ms. Porterfield, uh, that we do not have a lack of growing concern. Do you have a projection of when we will have a lack of growing concern? We also just talked about the ADA transferring from ADA, a shift to the enrollment look. Um, we are losing enrollment to whom? Who are we losing enrollment to, 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 who are we losing enrollment to? And what are the unknown inputs? You spoke about unknown inputs. If you did include the governor's numbers, what would our then budget look like? And what do we have in the reserves now? And what will we have in the reserves for twenty, twenty-two, twenty, twenty-three? And then the final, and I believe the most important one is why are we currently in this situation with all the money that we had given to us during COVID? Again, thank you for the question. I don't want to take anybody else's time, but I would like answers to those as, as soon as possible. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And now we will. Any more comments?
President Christian, this is comments about this item.
Uh, trustee Reckle.
Sorry about that. I, I just wanted to say that I do have questions and I'll send them in because time is short. Thank you.
I would like to say for the next board meeting will be scheduled March the sixteenth.
Excuse me, President Christian, excuse me. In the order of the agenda, the next is comments from the board and we have two minutes left. Can we go the two minutes? If nobody wants it, I would like to ask that we have a special meeting for African-American students. We heard that comment from our community today. Oh, I think I was on mute. Did you hear me, President Christian?
Yeah, so, so I'll go ahead and, and ask my question because I didn't get to ask. Pretending to like, uh, the ADA, the students, where, where is these students? Are they? I mean, they're lost or, I mean, we're, I mean, why we're losing students?
Th- this is a very astute question. And one of the things that I know the data team and ed services is, is, is plenty to do is look through, uh, some of the data we have when we're informed on where people are going. So if, if they ask, for example, us to forward transcripts, we definitely know where they're going. And, and I don't know if we have any exit data interview, uh, information, but to the extent we do, we're, we're, we're having internal discussions on co- getting all that so we can share it with the board. But I don't know the extent to which that, the amount of data that we're going to have to share, uh, but, but we are in the process of calling what we can.
Now we have reached the ten-thirty mark. Um, we are adjourned and we will meet on March sixteen.